And welcome to the Board of County Commissioners, our Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will consider the transmittal of three Comprehensive Plan Amendments to the State Land Planning Agency and other agencies for review. The Board will also consider Land Development Code amendments, which are related to the Comprehensive Plan Amendments. And as many of you know, we have a long list tonight for the RP2 area and the WV2 area. I will now recognize Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Planning Commission, who will provide an introduction to tonight's agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. We need to do a roll call. I'm sorry. Excuse me. Can you please do the roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Kemp?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
White?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum?
Thank you. And we will now turn to Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Planning Commission, to provide an introduction to tonight's agenda. I'm sorry. Excuse one second here. We have a... Oops. And I will recognize... I see that Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Both these planning areas are in my district, and I have some thoughts about the items before us this evening. So I respectfully like to ask that after the staff presentations and the public hearing has concluded and we get to board discussion, that I be recognized first, if that's possible.
Surely.
Thank you.
Okay. And it's going to be a long time, so you're going to... You have your sleeping bag. Okay. And we will now go to Melissa Zornita.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Planning Commission. I just wanted to provide some context to tonight's hearing and where we are in the process. As many of you all know, because you were on the Board in late 2019, a moratorium was enacted on both the area governed by the RP2 land use category and the Wy Mama Village Residential 2 land use category. And it was your direction that we undertake studies to look at those categories as well as update the Wy Mama Community Plan. We have undertaken that work for the last year or more now. But over the course of the year, of course, we ran into a huge challenge with the COVID pandemic. Prior to that, we had had fantastic input from the community at our initial open house. We had over 100 people at each of them. But over the course of the year, we've had a number of challenges in outreach and communicating with the public, many of whom, particularly in the rural area, do not have great Internet access and have challenges, you know, participating in our meetings that we held virtually. We did hold another in-person open house in November, but the participation was much less than we had hoped. I think that people are still very hesitant to participate in in-person meetings at this time. All of this, you know, we've done a lot of research analysis. You've heard from our consultants at multiple workshops, has led us to this hearing and where you would be considering transmittal of these amendments to the state for their review. The timing of this hearing is necessitated by the moratorium ending at the end of May. And our goal being that there be time to transmit these amendments to the state, have them back for your adoption, and then time for any appeal periods so they go into effect before that moratorium concludes. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on Monday night. And we heard, as I had been hearing over the last couple of weeks, that there was considerable concern on the part of many of our stakeholders that they were interested in having additional opportunities to weigh in on these projects. They have not... They would like more opportunities. They have felt challenged as well by the pandemic and being able to participate as they normally would. And that was an overriding concern of the Planning Commissions. It's not articulated in their resolutions because it's not something they could find it consistent or inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan on. But they were very concerned and actually sought the option to continue the hearing so that there would be more time to have additional feedback from the community. But I directed them that because of this hearing's timing, that they should go ahead and make consistency funding up. I just wanted to provide all of that context to you all as you enter into the hearing and hear from the public, just as we did on Monday night at that hearing. With that, if you're ready, Chair Kemp, we can turn to the first agenda item.
We can turn to the first agenda item. And I'm just wondering if... I didn't see anybody responding to this. So I guess we will... Thank you for that, for pointing that out. And we'll go to the first agenda item.
Okay. The presentation will be made by Mary Ann Abrahamsen.
All right. Great. Thank you. Let me go ahead and share my screen. Okay. Can you all see... Okay?
Looks good, Mary Ann.
Looks good. Okay. Thank you. All right. So good evening, Commissioners. Mary Ann Abrahamsen, Planning Commission Staff, here to present Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment 20-11 for the RP2 feature land use category and Code Amendment 21-0288 for the Planned Villages section of the Hillsborough County Land Development Code. So Jared Schneider of Kinley Horn, the project consultant, as well as others in the project team will be available after the presentation to answer any questions. So here we have the presentation structure this evening. And as Melissa had stated, these amendments have derived out of the RP2 feature land use study, which commenced in February 2020 at the request of the Board of County Commissioners. So since February 2020, we've held over 90 meetings with stakeholders, the public, county staff, and elected officials. Although the RP2 study did not seek to modify the community plan of Baum or Sunsetty Center, the notifications and engagement strategy was done in compliance with the Community Plan Update Guidelines. So every property owner in the study area received a mailed notification ahead of each open house. And we also maintained consistent communication via our email list, social media, and project webpage. So here's a map of the study area. The pink area is the area currently subject to the moratorium, in which we are referring to as the Baum Village Plan area. The purple dash line represents the Baum Community Plan boundary. And the yellow area is what we are referring to as the North Village Plan area. So all of our RP2 study area is outside the urban service area, which is represented by the dark blue line. We'll begin with HCCPA 20-11, in which I'll walk through some of the primary changes being proposed to the RP2 feature land use category. So as mentioned, we're proposing two sub-planning areas for RP2, the North Village Plan area and the Baum Village Plan area. The proposed base density of one dwelling unit per five gross acres remains the same as what is permitted today. However, the proposed acreage thresholds for the two sub-planning areas vary slightly due to the land analysis completed and the goals outlined in the Baum Community Plan. So under the proposed policies, in the North Village Plan area, one would be eligible to achieve up to two dwellings per acres on properties of 50 acres or greater if compliance with design rules and community benefit options is shown, which I'll explain further in my coming slides. And in the Baum Village Plan area, one would be eligible to achieve, again, up to two dwellings per acre on parcels of 160 acres or greater when complying with design rules and community benefit options. So both sub-planning areas may use aggregation to reach their respective 50 and 160 acre thresholds. And it should be mentioned that density is proposed to be calculated on uplands only. So currently, both areas may receive transfer of development rights up to four dwelling units per acre. And we're now proposing that the North Village Plan area be a receiving area for TDRs up to that four dwellings per acre, and the Baum Village Plan area be designated a sending area for TDRs. So I had briefly mentioned community benefits. We're discussing density. This provides a bit more information on what that entails. So community benefits are a variety of improvements in areas, including infrastructure, environmental lands, commercial and residential support uses, above and beyond the minimum requirements. So developers may request to provide improvements listed in the community benefits table to work their way above that base density of one dwelling units per five acres, but not exceeding two dwelling units per one acre. And I'll explain in further detail during the LDC amendment presentation and provide some examples of what that might look like. So there's a recognized need for an increase in focus on transportation improvements in this area. And one way to assist in addressing this issue is the development of a multimodal mobility master plan. So such a plan does not currently exist for this area and would provide a tool to identify needs and prioritize future improvements. And in our previous drafts, we had not included language pertaining to Vision Zero. But given feedback received during the January BOCC workshop, we've now included a policy speaking to Vision Zero in RP2. And another change under this policy of community connectivity is the issue of gated communities. And we previously proposed that gated subdivisions not be permitted in efforts to avoid the standalone subdivisions and to increase transportation connectivity throughout communities. But we have some concerns regarding limiting personal property protection rights. So we amended the policy to allow gates internal to a subdivision as long as the gate is not abutting a main road and as long as it doesn't restrict transportation connectivity. So added language, which is not currently present in the adopted policies, is regarding school sightings. So we're proposing that applicants of rezonings containing 50 or more residential units consult with the school district regarding potential school sites. Another new policy is regarding residential support uses. And states that lands three acres or less designated for residential support uses, including but not limited to daycares, churches, and healthcare facilities, shall not be subtracted from residential density calculations. And this is proposed to encourage such uses. And we've also added a policy on agriculture, stating that up to 50% of the open space requirements may consist of agricultural uses, including co-op farming and agriheads. So next up is the Hillsborough County Land Development Code Amendment 21-0288. Many of the proposed LDC changes are in response to ensuring consistency with the proposed changes to the comp plan. And as discussed during the previous presentation CPA 20-11, which I just concluded, one of the proposed changes to the RP2 feature land use policies and then corresponding Planned Villages section of the Land Development Code is the concept of community benefits as it relates to improvements and density. Developers have the choice to request community benefit options to achieve up to two dwelling units per acre. The options must be approved by county staff and must go above and beyond the minimum standards outlined in the code. There are a total of 13 options to choose from and have corresponding densities ranging from .1 dwelling unit per gross acre to one dwelling unit per gross acre. Design standards, which include community benefit options include, but is not limited to, mix of housing types, commercial development, buffering and screening, open space, and transportation. So as I walk through some of the proposed primary changes to the LDC, I'll explain how the community benefits apply to various regulations. So to encourage a range of housing types, price points, and architecture within each development, a minimum of three housing types are required. Using one of the community benefit options, developers could increase the minimum housing type to four following the percentage guidelines you see before you. And this community benefit option is associated with a density of .5 dwelling units per gross acre. So adopted RP2 policies require developers to construct commercial uses on-site prior to receiving approvals to build 100% of their residential entitlements. But the project team is proposing to modify this requirement due to the data presented in the concurrent market study conducted by WTLNA. So commercial development is no longer required within each individual development. Rather, it's encouraged, and also a focus has been placed on developing commercial and identified nodes. So a community benefit that developers may explore is constructing onsite non-residential uses, including but not limited to daycare churches and healthcare facilities. And this community benefit is associated with a density of .5 dwelling units per gross acre. Another community benefit that addresses commercial development in RP2 is construction of offsite regional commercial. And this community benefit is associated with a density of one dwelling unit per gross acre. So for the proposed buffering and screening section, the base minimum buffering requirement is 250 feet. But given circumstances in site layout, the buffer may range from 50 to 250 feet. However, the buffer range corresponds to a scale of various intensities of vegetative plantings and fencing. So the intent is for smaller buffers to have more intense screening. A complete table outlining the specifics of this is located in your packet in the Proposed Land Development Code. And a community benefit option to further enhance this would be to provide screening and buffering above the minimum for a density of .5 dwelling units per gross acre. So the adopted open space requirements are calculated on land remaining after the clustering ratio is accounted for. In attempts to encourage larger lot sizes and flexibility, clustering is no longer required. So therefore, the proposed open space requirement is now 40% and may include elements, including but not limited to agriculture, passive recreation, and community gardens, which must all be dedicated to an HOA or similar entity. And a community benefit option to encourage environmental protection is dedication of up to 10% of the open space to Environmental Lands Acquisition Protection Program, or ELAP, as approved by the county. And this is associated with a density of .5 dwelling units per gross acre. So as touched on earlier, we received feedback from community members, the development community, and our elected officials on the need for an increased focus on transportation in the area. So proposed minimum regulations addressing transportation include cross vehicular and pedestrian access internal to developments, particularly when aggregating, ensuring that transportation facilities providing access to the site must be up to county standard, and providing appropriate right-of-way, no design exceptions shall be permitted. So community benefit options to encourage additional transportation improvements include using the county's Mobility Fee Alternative Satisfaction Agreement at .1 dwelling unit per gross acre and constructing at least two trail connections to an adjacent county trail system at .25 dwelling units per gross acre. So here's our anticipated schedule for these items. We have a projected BOCC adoption hearing on March 25, ahead of the moratorium deadline on May 29. So the Planning Commission found HCCPA 20-11 and the Hillsborough County LDC Amendment 21-0288 inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for underincorporated Hillsborough County based on the proposed removal of wetland density credits. So in response to the proposed removal of wetland density credits, the Planning Commission suggests additional time be given to address public concerns. And we ask that you take action on these individual amendments today. Thank you for your time. And the staff and project consultant Jared Schneider from Kinley Horn are available to answer any questions that you might have.
Wait. Can I hear the chair?
Can you hear me now? My... I need technical staff because my iPad just went off. Thank you. I wasn't sure. I didn't see anybody out there, and I was texting. So I can see the HTV screen, so I don't... But I'm not sure what happened. They have to be...
Chair, I don't see any hands raised, so I...
Okay. So then maybe with no hands raised, then I guess we have presented the Code, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and the LDC amendment there. And this is a public hearing. Now let me just... I guess, is this correct? Just proceed this way, correct? Okay. I'm going to... With staff. So I have a long list for the public hearing, but what we're going to do is combine on... First, we're going to do the RP2, and we'll combine anyone who wants to speak on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, as well as the related LDC. And what I'd like to do is, you know, to just... So that people wouldn't have to have the confusion that we've had in the past in separating the two issues. And I'm just wondering, about three minutes per a speaker on the combined issue, and we'll just combine those lists. So anybody on those two lists, and we'll give three minutes per speaker because there's quite a long list. Is that amenable to everyone? Okay. We will move on. I'll just start calling on the list. Bonnie Aylor? Ms. Aylor?
Not on the call right now.
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear that.
We do not have Ms. Aylor on the call right now.
Okay. I'll go to Sandra Durant. Ms. Durant?
Hold on.
Hello?
Go ahead, Ms. Durant.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sandra Duarte. I worked for Florida Partnership as loan specialist for the last 14 years. I'm also a USDA self-participant. I did this program with my husband 13 years ago, and we still live in our home with our two kids. I started to work for Florida Home Partnership after I finished the program because I wanted to help people accomplish the dream of owning their first home through affordable housing for... From people like myself that I couldn't afford a new home because everything in the housing market was too expensive to buy. And I love what I do, and I want to help others accomplish the dream that I did with my husband 13 years ago. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll move to the next speaker.
Thank you.
Tonya Bernie. Ms. Bernie? Tonya Bernie?
Tony, can you hear us?
Yes. Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Sorry about that. I'm driving. So thank you, Board members. My name is Tonya Bernie. I'm a wife, a mother, a college grad, a financial educator, and advocate. I'm a member of Enterprise Alatina. And a previous... I sat and started on the side of the Wy Mama CDC. I am a product of Wy Mama. I was born and raised at Wy Mama. And I am definitely proud to be from this community. Like many growing up, I wanted to make a difference. I wanted to... I was driven. I wanted to go off to school. I wanted to come back and make a difference and do the things that's needed and be appreciated within the community. So there's definitely a lot that's needed in Wy Mama, and I think it's really important. And so I do support extending the moratorium for 120 days so that the Wy Mama CDC and the Enterprise Alatina can finalize the Wy Mama Community Plan. There are so many things that's needed, and I think it is just to give us that additional time and give them that additional time to engage the community so that we can really get what is needed for everyone within the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand that that was probably related to the next item, speaking to Wy Mama, but we'll take that because I'm sure there's going to be some confusion here. This is on the...
Chair, can we... I'm sorry to interrupt, but can we clarify that since we're running both comp plan amendments, that even though we're allowing for the testimony for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, as well as the LDC for RP2, this community is... We've been holding these meetings together, and I'm not sure that in the sign-up, they indicated which item they're speaking to. So for example, the last caller was speaking regarding the next plan amendment. And I want to make sure that if that testimony has been offered, that it's included in both amendment files.
Right. Which I had just spoke to... I recognize that she was speaking with regards to Wy Mama. And so I'm... I didn't see any objection when I stated that before with the attorneys, that we can just recognize that for Wy Mama? Is that... I hear... I see a yes shaking. So I think otherwise, we might run into terrible difficulty.
Right. I just wanted to make sure it was on the record that it was... We are hearing testimony from both Comprehensive Amendments, as well as the Land Development Code.
We will be, but actually, the first part is about the RP2 relating to Baum. So that's what we're doing right now. But because she spoke to Wy Mama, we'll have that on the record for the second one.
Thank you.
Okay. So and now James Franklin, Mr. Franklin?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Having a little difficulty. I'm wondering if it's... Can we put up the volume in this room?
Tell me when you're ready.
Okay.
Sir, sir, please turn the audio down in the background.
James Franklin, is my turn?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
All right. Well, I'm a little confused. A couple of days ago, when we talked, one of the ranchers slash farmers, whatever, got up and spoke on his phone and said, you know, with this wetland density, if they lose that, they won't be able to go to the bank and borrow money for the next year's crop or whatever. And I don't understand how that works because the wetlands, I don't see how the wetlands are worth any money to borrow money, but maybe they are. What I'm confused about, if a guy has 100 acres and half of it's wetlands, and if he goes to the bank and borrows money, does the bank loan him money on how many houses can be built on his property? Whenever he sells it, 20 years down the road or whatever? It just doesn't make sense. And the other thing is, the whole deal with the wetlands is the problem. Now, I've got to say something about... You know, we just... We're finding out that these subdivisions they want to put in, all the lots around the outsides are going to be nice big lots that anybody who probably don't... Next lots in are going to be about half that size. And in the middle of the subdivision, we're going to be down to 40-foot lots again. I just don't understand this. We damn sure don't want to have... Excuse my French. We don't want to have these little lots. Nobody wants to buy these little lots. The kids can't play in the yard with 40-foot lots. But maybe I'm going on too far, but that's just my idea. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dennis Carlton Jr.?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Dennis Carlton Jr., Moores Lake Road, Dover, Florida. Madam Chair, Board of County Commissioners, I appreciate this opportunity to speak and give feedback as a landowner, a farmer, a rancher in Hillsborough County. I'm an eight-generation Floridian, have been in the cattle business all my life. I also serve as President of Hillsborough County Farm Bureau, and I want to make some comments tonight to these proposals. There's a few issues in regards to agriculture I think are imperative for everyone here to fully understand in relation to these discussions. I want to focus on the agriculture component a second. Agriculture will remain viable or successful when it is profitable. Agriculture will remain viable or successful when it is profitable. In the Future Land Use Amendment Language, the first paragraph, it mentions agricultural preservation. We, as a community and county, cannot preserve ag. We can, however, protect ag, ag lands and agriculturalists by making common-sense steps to prevent burdensome regulations and policies that affect our lands and livelihoods. One of the most important issues I see with this proposal is the negative impact of the wetland density credit removal. We, the ag community, are very concerned that there has been virtually no public involvement on this issue at all, especially from the ag folks. And to be honest, makes me feel this was rushed through without input from those most impacted. Staff has done a lot of work, generally, on these land use amendments, but virtually no involvement on the wetland density issue, not with the Agricultural Economic Development Council or Hillsborough County Farm Bureau. Almost all ag lands in the county have wetlands. We take pride in conservation and are good stewards of the land, especially the wetlands. We follow best management practices in which the Florida Department of Ag and Consumer Services develops and adopts. Changing this wetland density will have a large impact on our values, and to be honest, may fall in line with the Burt Harris Act, which provides a process for landowners to follow when their property is unfairly affected by government action. Even though today's proposal affects RP2, WVR2 land use categories, this could be the first step in stripping away our rights as landowners in the rural area. This is removing density away from lands that don't have much density to begin with. The ag industry will be the most affected industry with this proposal, and I revert back to my earlier comments. Ag can't be preserved. However, ag will remain so long as it stays profitable, and if it is protected by smart policy, by allowing farms to operate without regulations that affect them, like pulling densities away. Policies like these impact values, borrowing power, and carries with it many unintended consequences. The ag community is usually a group that doesn't have a lot to say, but tonight, I hope you listen when we speak. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you this evening.
Thank you. And also, we have Dennis Carlton.
Dennis Carlton, Dover, Florida. Madam Chair and fellow Commissioners, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I've been in the cattle business and other facets of agriculture my entire life. My family and I own multiple parcels scattered throughout the county. One of the hats that I wear is chair of the Hillsborough County Agricultural Economic Development Council. There are a few areas I want to speak to you about in regards to the RP2 and WVR2, BLM and Y-Mama areas. First of all, let's discuss the procedure in the wetland density removal aspect of this process. We, as the agricultural council and the community, have worked on the Water One Project, and ended up with a pretty good finished product. However, on this density removal, there's been no input from the AEDC, which is charted by the VOCC for recommendation issues that affect the ag industry. The reason there was no input was because of the timing which this was put into this package, and I think all the Commissioners, I'm sure, are clear of what that timing was. As elected officials, I'm certain that you feel a responsibility in keeping your constituents aware of what is happening. The ag community and rural landowners have been blindsided by this proposal. We are asking for the opportunity to have dialogue before such a wide sweeping regulation that has immense negative impacts on rural landowners is implemented. There's always unintended consequences whenever we have rules, and I'm going to give you an example of something that could take place here. 40 acres in sizes made a quarter of a mile on all four sides. If six tenths of it was in wetlands, and a man wanted to sell half of it to his friend that lived in town to build a house, he would not be able to do it, because a man wouldn't be able to get a permit. Those are the kinds of things. I could also address the gentleman about the appraisal process and ag lands, but there's not time for me to do that, but maybe we can do that if we have, if we continue this thing, and can talk about it in more detail. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Gary Ritter?
Hi, this is Gary Ritter. I'm the Assistant Director of Government and Community Affairs with the Florida Farm Bureau Federation. And Madam Chair and County Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to get to speak with you this evening. I think you're going to find that many of my comments are very similar to the ones that you've just heard. We, at the Farm Bureau, represent 300 commodities statewide, and we have 137,000 families in our membership. More than 20,000 of these family members reside in a six-county area, which includes Hillsborough County. And as you've just heard, the Hillsborough County Farm Bureau and its membership continues to be a strong partner in the county planning process. As private landowners working the land on our homesteads and producing food and fiber for the state and our country, the value of our land is directly tied to our borrowing power, adversely affecting farming practices, challenges our ability to work the land as effectively and economically as possible. The proposed wetland density credits impact the future potential of our land, and therefore reduces the borrowing, borrowing power and our land values. We understand that the county Commissioners have directed the Planning Commission to remove or adjust density on private lands through a proposed wetland density credit. The agricultural community, as you've heard, is opposed of this proposed wetland density credit, and feels that this is an attempt to strip away the value of agricultural lands in the county. Almost all ag lands in this county have wetlands. We are very good stewards of the land and of wetlands in particular. If it's the protection of wetlands you're concerned about, we have and continue to implement BMPs to protect those areas. So there doesn't appear to be any environmental reason to enact this proposal. We are very concerned that there has been little public involvement on this issue. In fact, it wasn't until January 25th that we actually saw proposed wetland density credit language. The Planning Commission has done a lot of work on this land use amendments, but no past involvement on this issue. Likewise, this was not brought before the County Agricultural Economic Development Council for its consideration. And lastly, it appears that there's been no time to study or work together on this issue. In addition, we have not been presented with any data or evidence that there's a problem or a need to remove density from agricultural or private lands. In deliberating, please consider the unintended consequences of reducing densities, as it could actually speed the premature conversion of agricultural land. Agricultural businesses run their operations by taking out loans on their land.
I'm sorry, sir, your time is up.
And any reduction in land values.
Sir, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Chris McCullough?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Commissioners, Madam Chairman, I appreciate the chance. My name's Chris McCullough, or Bear McCullough. I'm a Florida cattle rancher. My family's been in the business for over 45 years. In BLM, one of the properties that are, is in question is a piece of land that I own or my family owns, which falls into the larger-than-160-acre area, which is where we live. It's where we raise our children, it's where we raise our cattle, where we grow our families. I have not been contacted by anyone from the county in regards to these changes, which directly affect my livelihood and my family. The 40% open space requirement will consume about 17% more of my land than what the current buffer requirements are. From my perspective, this appears to be a taking. I am unaware of any cost analysis that has been performed regarding the community improvements in the area. Let me be clear. I am not a developer, nor do we have plans to develop that land. I understand this is an extremely complicated proposal, but I do know that there are no incentives for the landowners to participate. My family and I would rather not be a part of these proposed changes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joe Sumner?
Yes, I'm here.
You can go.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Joe Sumner. My family has been in the BLM area for over 100 years. Currently, I have 110 acres, two and a half miles to the east of Highway 301, and we are less than one mile from the residential development. My property is surrounded on two sides by the 672 and McGrady Road rezoning that is currently in litigation right now. I've been approached several times to sell my property, and I'm not interested in that at this time. We've had multiple offers, will not entertain them. But this plan that is, that is proposed, would, the prior and the current one, will leave me no options other than a selling to my one neighbor, and that kind of leaves me in a very tight spot, if and when. I expect one day that it, there will not be a choice. God willing, there will, there will be a choice, but, you know, no one knows the future, and I am not in favor of this current plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay Sizemore?
Jay, can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Mr. Sizemore?
We can hear you. Go ahead, Mr. Sizemore.
Mr. Sizemore is on the line. I don't know if you can hear us. Jay Sizemore, if you can hear us? You're recognized? Mr. Sizemore is not responding to us right now.
Maybe we can come back, if he shows up.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Bianca Gonzalez?
Yes, how you doing? I'm Bianca Gonzalez, and I'm so grateful for my new home and the self-help housing program. I learned so much during the building process. We are creating a community. Also, I was a volunteer for Florida Home Partnership, and I was giving out a lot of information, and a lot of people was interested in. Not everyone can afford a house or given up the unpayment, and I'm grateful to have the house for the four years, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kurt Williams?
Mr. Williams is not on the line.
Okay. Jimmy Selvi?
Yes, this is James Selvi.
Yes, go ahead.
My name is James Selvi. My name is James Selvi. I live at 20925 Keaton Road in Y-Mama. I'm an ag landowner, son of a former Commissioner in Hillsborough County, in this district that we're speaking about. My, my dad said years ago that there was a plan for future growth in southeast Hillsborough County. That was 30 years ago, which means that the property owners have had these rights for 30 years. When my dad took office, there was 110 miles of unpaid roads in Hillsborough County. That was an infrastructure problem. When he left office, there were seven miles of unpaid roads in Hillsborough County. We don't solve the infrastructure problem by taking the land rights away from the property owners. You go to work on the problem directly. Lack of planning on their part shouldn't punish the landowner today. We in southeast Hillsborough County don't have much to begin with, and want to assume the things that that needs to. And now you're trying to take wetland credits away, which significantly would impact the future values of the land? I strongly oppose this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madison Aston?
Hi. My name is Madison Aston, Holloway Road, Plant City, Florida. Madam Chair and fellow County Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm a fourth-generation resident of Hillsborough County, and my family has been farming and growing strawberries across the county for nearly 100 years. We own multiple parcels of land, and I wanted to speak to you in regards to the wetland density removal that is being presented here this evening. There's a lot of information encompassed in these RP2 and WVR2 packets, and honestly, it's a lot to unravel. The folks in the agricultural community have shared with me the summary of the wetland density removal in these areas, and how this removal could extend to the rural areas affecting many landowners and farmers like myself. First of all, the biggest impact that I see with the proposal is devastating impacts that we could have on land. You're basically stripping away densities in areas that really don't have much to begin with. This also will be a reduction in these values moving forward, which in turn has impact on our borrowing power to be able to farm, and in many cases, continue on a family legacy. People always want to try to protect agriculture, but I honestly feel that this is 100% the opposite of that, and I feel that it's a bad policy. I want everyone here to think about this. We as farmers and landowners in our county take pride in good stewardship of the land, of land and wetland alike. Secondly, the wetland removal proposal has had no involvement from the ones it mostly impacts. It feels like this has been rushed through, and it's very important here to realize the consequences this policy proposal could bring to our ag community. The County Commission does not hear from ag folks often, but hopefully this evening you'll listen to many of our concerns. I would like my comments to be on record for all hearings this evening, and I just want to thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Kenneth Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and good evening Commissioners and staff. My name is Kenneth Parker, Executive Director of the Florida Strawberry Growers Association. I commend each of you for your service to the residents of Hillsborough County. I know you all face challenging days whenever you're trying to make the best decisions possible as it relates to land use. I've been asked by the FSGA Board of Directors to make a couple of simple points to you regarding the unintended consequences of decisions that have a negative impact on the value of farmland. Our collective concern is that removal of the wetland density credit being proposed for RP2 and WVR2 is a first step in the direction to impact all landowners outside of the urban service area. Farmers and ranchers in Hillsborough County are very good stewards of their land, whether it's uplands or wetlands. Best management practices have been adopted to ensure that wetlands are valued and protected. There doesn't appear to be any environmental reason to delete the wetland density credit. However, one thing that is abundantly clear, the negative financial impact of removing the wetland density credit will burden landowners and disproportionately have a negative impact on landowners with smaller tracts of land. Today's high-value crops, like strawberries, require access to capital in the form of borrowed money. The ability to borrow money at reasonable rates is greatly impacted by good land values. Any changes to land use that negatively affects the borrowing power will cripple the very farms and ranches that generate 28,000 jobs and have an economic impact of over $3 billion in Hillsborough County. The only way to keep agriculture alive and well is to keep agriculture profitable. The Hillsborough County Agricultural Economic Development Council, which I serve on, was designed by the county years ago to, to help policymakers understand the consequences of actions to be considered. The council has not been given the opportunity to thoroughly study the impacts and weigh in on this issue. I respectfully ask the Board and staff to review the Florida State statutes and pay particular attention to the Burt J. Harris Jr. Private Property Rights Protection Act. I'm no attorney, but as I read that act, it specifically addresses the actions that are being proposed and gives protection to landowners against the devaluation of land due to a taking of existing property rights. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I would respectfully ask that my comments be applied to all remaining sections of this meeting that address the removal of the wetland density credit. Thank you.
Thank you. Richie Longenecker?
Mr. Longenecker does not appear to be on the call.
Thank you. John Privat? John Privat?
John is not on the call as well. He has not called in.
Jason Conrad?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Commissioners, my name is Jason Conrad. I'm a member of the Florida Cattlemen's Association Executive Committee, representing District 3 in 11 county districts, which includes Hillsborough County. I live in the Dover-Antioch area of Hillsborough, where my family is in cattle production, hay production, and row crop production in Dover and Antioch, along with the Olympia Pinecrest area. I want to come to you tonight on the side of agriculture and these proposals that have become alarming to our ag industry. Specifically, I want to talk about the wetland density proposal, our wetlands. In agriculture, we don't want to see any kind of devaluing going on in our wetlands. What we do with our wetlands and distance in Florida as agriculture, that's what we do with our uplands. There specifically in the Antioch area, home to nice of theirs, we collect stormwater on our ranch.
Are we? I think, excuse me, sir, if you can hold for a minute, I think there might be some technical difficulties. I don't know if it's on his end or ours.
Is he breaking up?
Yes.
Try this again. We good?
Hi, we can hear you now, sir.
Okay. We want to continue to not devalue our wetlands. What agriculturists do with our wetlands, specifically ranchers and farmers, we collect stormwater from highways. We filter that before it makes it to our tributaries here in the Tampa Bay area, specifically for us, Lake Tenota Sassa. And so we got to make sure that we work with our landowners. Because our landowners, we already have options through conservation easements to preserve these wetlands. So we cannot allow any devaluation of our wetlands. Family farms are already under attack when the family patriarch passes away in the form of an estate tax. If we were to devalue any agriculture land, it would put those families in a predicament when they want to sell off a portion of their tract to pay the state and federal estate tax. We are a billion-dollar economic driver in this county, so therefore, it is pivotal that our land values are not devalued. Also, I just don't feel like there was enough notice for these proposals in a public setting. I feel like we need more input from our ag economic development council. We need to make sure all these decisions are strictly science-based and not come across as a perceived land grab in the middle of the night. Pre-COVID, the number was 1,000 people a day are moving to this state looking for paradise. And it feels like 980 are coming to Hillsborough County and the Bay Area. So we need to utilize maybe those folks to help pay for some of the offsetting cost of infrastructure. But bottom line, I'd like my comments to pertain to all three proposals tonight moving forward, and we need to help protect our private property rights.
Your time is up. Thank you. Brian Shoup?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
About now.
Mr. Shoup, yes, you can go ahead.
Okay. All right, Brian Shoup, live here in Baum. My family's been in the hay, cattle, and sod business all my life. Just trying to take away our wetlands here and devalue our property just isn't sitting right with most people in the ag community. One thing to be said, farmers and ranchers, they take care of the wetlands way better than anybody else. You know, if you want to see wetlands not being taken care of, just go to thousands of acres that the county has purchased through the ELAP programs, and you're going to see wetlands not being taken care of. County pretty much just lets that grow up in invasive species that we all try to get rid of. However, there's just not been enough discussion on this topic, so I feel like it's just not the right time to make a decision. Well, that's about all I got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jake Kramer?
Good evening, Chair and Commission. This is Jake Kramer with Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street, number 2100. I represent a number of landowners and developers that are affected by this proposal. I'm also a board member of the Hillsborough County Farm Bureau and a sixth-generation agricultural landowner. Because these comments are also applicable to WVR2, I ask that they be made a part of that record as well. I'd like to address the issue of taking away wetland density, which is really the proposal tonight. I have to say, I'm pretty shocked at the presentation that we heard tonight. I believe what I heard staff say is that density changes are not being proposed. Commissioners, that's simply not accurate. This has been called a removal of a wetland density bonus, which makes it seem like it's some kind of a density giveaway to landowners, but that's not the case. What the county is actually proposing is to take away existing density from landowners from their wetland areas. This is similar to a downzoning for all properties within WVR2 and RP2. This burden will fall squarely on the shoulders of the agricultural community and not on developers, as what I think is the intent here. I'm also surprised that you weren't really informed what happened Monday night. The Planning Commission took an unprecedented step and found unanimously that every single amendment that you're considering tonight is inconsistent with your own comprehensive plan. Think about that for a minute. Your Planning Commission found that your public-initiated amendment would be illegal. It's inconsistent with your plan. Only about a week ago, 10 days ago, 255 new pages of regulations were released for these land use categories with hundreds of pages to back up. This is the first time I've ever seen this county undertake such fundamental changes so quickly. In the 90 meetings that were mentioned, none of those meetings were focused on this wetland issue. Planning Commission Chairman Joseph said that this is a fundamental change to the plan, and he said that there were no grounds for these changes. Commissioners, your charge is to review these amendments, and even though this is legislative action, you don't have endless discretion here. State law says you need data and analysis, and state law also says that amendments must be consistent with the remainder of your plan. On the second point, the Planning Commission actually analyzed this proposal and found that it's not consistent with your comprehensive plan, and they pointed to, for example, future land use objective 29. The legal status of your plan also states that the goals, objectives, and policies of the plan must be, and all of your actions must be, quote, "consistent with the protection of private property rights." That is, your analysis today must review the protection of private property rights. There are likely thousands of landowners being affected by these changes, and we would like for you to give us more time to work with you.
Your time is up, sir. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, Mike Peterson?
Hello, Mike Peterson here. Not sure who's in the background. Skewed a bit tonight might be characterizations of RP2 and WVR2 as rural lands despite their origins as urban expansion area when the urban service area was first introduced in the 1990s. Just look at the density clustering and public service requirements to see these areas were not planned to remain rural. You need these areas and much more to accommodate the next 700,000 people coming and unable to squeeze in existing neighborhoods under the guise of infill and redevelopment. As Commissioner Myers asked recently, can someone show us where all the new population is supposed to be accommodated, if not these areas? You've pushed 18 months of moratorium without a true emergency basis, only in desire to replan these areas more to your liking. When the community planning results weren't to your liking, you excise what you didn't like without a word of input from the community stakeholders. The unanimous rejection by the Planning Commission should tell you something. Even tonight, we stakeholders get short-frist speaking times when we were supposed to get three minutes per each individual public hearing. Under the design rules of this RP2 portion, the buffering and screening, it requires 250 feet of buffer adjacent to any ELAP-acquired lands and lands merely on ELAP's list of approved to be acquired. Why does a landowner suffer a 250-foot setback from land that is not ELAP-owned or even under contract, the best I can tell, but merely desired on a list of desires created by others without indication of interest by the impacted owners? Imposing this painful restriction based only on a committee of non-impacted volunteers creating their wish list for public funds is very wrong. It reflects the disdain shown for landowners, as you've also sought to eliminate wetland entitlement credits already greatly reduced compared to uplands. You're now seeking complete regulatory taking of these privately-owned lands, and I encourage landowners listening to contemplate legal challenge, but also to prepare to petition the property appraiser for complete elimination of taxation on these lands and consider other value reductions these restrictions impose on your ownerships. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Gomez?
Good evening, county commissioners. I'm Pamela Gomez, and I'm the Executive Director for the Wyomama CDC. We are excited about the opportunity to have an updated neighborhood plan for Wyomama. I think it's very important that we express this. The hope with the opportunity is that the community can have lasting improvements and investments. As you know, 31% of the residents in Wyomama live below the federal poverty level, and 35% experience technical access issues. This makes community participation a challenge. Foremost, what we have experienced is that with the pandemic, the meaningful community engagement and participation that is needed has been very challenging. The people in the community have been struggling just to survive. Unfortunately, the most vulnerable and impacted voices and stories have been minimal in this planning process period. So we do request for more time to complete and finalize the neighborhood plan with all the inputs residents and impacted communities wage. As you know, there's also has been underfunding and a lack of investment in Wyomama for basic things like water that could improve the quality of life in Wyomama for all its residents. We want to do this right, and we don't want to be in the position of asking for an updated plan because of lack thereof very soon down the line. So as the Wyomama CDC, we request for more time and an extension to the existing moratorium before it's submitted for adoption to you and to the state of Florida for another 120 days to allow for the community participation of all residents and stakeholders. Lastly, we support affordable and obtainable housing in the downtown area. And I would like to ask that my comments please be added to all the other sections as well. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We'll make sure that, I know your comments were directed to Wyomama, so we'll make sure that that's on the record for Wyomama. Wanda Botten?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman and Commissioners, for this opportunity. I hope you can hear me okay.
Yes, we can hear you.
Wanda Botten, 2047th Street. Thank you. Wyomama, Florida. I happen to live inside the Wyomama Community Plan Boundary Area. I happen to live smack dab in what will be considered the downtown overlay area. We are a farm family. My husband was born and raised in Wyomama. His family name is actually on the original plat map of Wyomama. Our grandchildren are seventh generation in Wyomama. As a farm family, we built our home here at John Ruth, built many businesses along the way. And currently, we co-own JMR Produce Company, Ultra Farms, BBS Farms, Loop Farms, and JMR Farms with the Sizemore family. We farm several hundred acres in rip crops. We have strawberries, watermelon, and cantaloupe. We employ 25 full-time year-round employees, and our operation requires 500 to 600 additional seasonal farm labor. I'd like to say that we are in opposition to removing the wetland density credit and the community benefits pertaining to the land dedication for the parks, civic, and ELAP, I believe are items H, I, and K. We're one of the dwindling few large farm operations left in Baum-Wyomama, and we contribute immensely to the local economy through payroll, farm services, and other goods. We participate in the Agriculture Economic Development Council, the AEDC, and we're members of the Florida Strawberry Growers Association. We're opposed to removing this wetland density credit and all plan changes, actually, that would adversely affect the overall property value of our land. Property values, they directly affect the amount of borrowing that's needed for us to plant, for us to harvest, for us to make our payroll. In fact, we believe that the more regulations that you place on farm operations and landowners, the faster the desire to convert the land to non-ag uses. Like they said before, farming can't be done without being profitable, and lowering the property assessment affects the borrowing capacity of the owner. Recently, the consultant WTLNA found that ag production impact is 25 cents on the dollar for costs of providing public services, and probably most of the reason for that is because the landowner already pays those costs. You know that ag land is already in decline in Hillsborough County, and these changes will no doubt just accelerate to more non-ag.
I'm sorry, your time is up, ma'am. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bryce Bowden? Bryce Bowden?
It seems that Mr. Bowden has dropped off the call. Mr. Bowden, are you there?
I do not see you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And Ron Weaver? Ron Weaver?
After the wetland density bonuses, yes, can you hear me now, Madam Chairman?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me now, Madam Chairman?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Members of the, thank you, Madam Chairman. Ron Weaver, 401 East Jackson Street. I'd like to thank you for considering not doing away with the wetland density bonuses. My granddad gave my mom free, the only lot we could afford next to his in North Carolina, or we would have never had the American dream. Density bonuses help families slice up lots, in some cases, to get the kids their lots. Little builders live and die by 20 to 50% more density, depending on the fractions of unit entitlements, to get to a whole one or two or three instead of worthless fractions for these family lots and small builder savings density bonuses. Black ink instead of red ink and foreclosure or less than, less loans are going to result, as you've heard from many speakers tonight, if you clobber the hundreds of victims' density. Yes, houses become more affordable with such often lower-cost components of life and death to many would-be affordable units in the national crisis of such access to safe shelter. 20 to 50% less affordable housing in wetland-prone areas would be unconscionable. Many hundreds bought in good faith reliance on this density for which they usually or always pay prices based on the density they calculated when they set the price. I've applied the rule hundreds of times in initial discussions with clients, how to count density in discounting, and a number of others, the same or similar math bonus. Millions of dollars were spent in good faith, and these densities allowed for decades. Unanimously, Monday, the Planning Commission did not find this doing away with the wetland density bonus consistent with your comp plan. They did not elaborate, but there are in the comp plan provisions for property rights elaborated by my partner Jake Kramer and a provision for enough density for efficient services provision and for enough density for transit to work. At least one Planning Commissioner called it a taking relied upon for essential purchase. These essential reliances by these essential citizens to clobber their density is also a Burt Harris private property rights violation. That is, without compensation or even buying down their density or otherwise making the hundreds of victims whole. Protecting wetlands you cover, but I wish for you to please consider the fact that these wetland density bonuses are compensation for the fact that they're not allowed to fill the wetlands, a provision of Florida law since 1984. Some other jurisdictions have the same integrity of the. Some other jurisdictions have the same integrity of the process, allowing the Wetland Density Bonuses. Therefore, if there are hidden agendas for open space, or not in my backyard, or less congestion, let there be a density buydown or other less expensive litigation, and let us be upfront with each other about these Wetland Density Bonuses and their crucial role for protecting the value of collateral that folks now be foreclosed on with respect to preserving ag lands and preserving those who own those ag lands. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. We'll now move to those who signed up for the LDC, and as I said, we're combining those, and I won't be recognizing, because it's a total of three minutes, anyone who signed up for both and who has already spoken. Noel Lacor?
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes?
I believe we skipped over Reed Fishbuck?
I did call his name, I thought, but I thought maybe, go ahead. Is he there?
Reed, you were not recognized?
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Reed Fishbuck, 510 Bonnenburg Drive, Suite 208, Brandon, Florida, 33511. In the RP2 South Village, there are only two unzoned parcels larger than 160 acres, and one of those is currently in zoning litigation, so we may be down to one. This is a little different way of looking at things than what was presented to the Commissioners in the study that was presented on January 13th. Are we doing all this for one parcel of land? The only option we have given smaller landowners is to sell to the big guy next door. We have left no options for landowners less than 160 acres. The proposal as it reads is extremely too complicated to interpret, but I can tell you that the underlying theme is to take away current landowner rights. Community benefits have been proposed as a way to earn back the current density, but they come with either unknown or extreme costs. Building a 30,000-square-foot building in downtown Baum is around a $6 million project to earn back 50% of your density. Based on 160 acres, donating 10% of your land to ELAP for 25% of your current density back costs $760,000. This number is based on the $47,500 per acre ELAP paid for the Agmark parcel and was determined to be fair market value. Community benefits as proposed cost more than the value of the land. TDRs have been eliminated in the South Village. Non-contiguous landowners can currently transfer density within the South Village, but that has been taken out of this plan. Density can only go to the North Village. There is not enough land in the North Village to support a TDR program to the South Village. TDRs as proposed in this plan will not work. I would love to see TDRs work, but they will not work in this plan. I am extremely concerned over the 40% open space. I have measured and verified that this provision would take more land from the landowner than the current 250-foot buffer. This policy clearly reduces the value of the land. The 250-foot buffer required on properties adjoining ELAP-acquired or approved sites, do we really need a buffer from the buffer? I mean, how many buffers do we need? Commissioners, every one of these policies is designed to remove density and value from current landowners, many of whom have been pillars of the community for the past 50 years. These are the guys that have stuck it out the longest and turned down the offers from developers. Are we wanting to remove all their rights? I do not support the RP2 Plan Amendment as draft. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to the names on the LDC who have not yet spoken. Noel Lacor?
My name is Noel Lacor. The proposed community updates are a great start, but they are not ready. An extension on the moratorium is needed. COVID has hindered the process almost from the start, although the internet has helped in connecting the Planning Commission with the community. Rural areas such as Baum and WyMama do not have reliable internet. There's also a large population of residents who do not know how to use the internet and/or do not wish to. Because of that, there should be more in-person meetings so that all residents have a chance to participate in the process. I listened to all the public comments at Monday's Planning Commission meeting, and one thing was clear: nobody was happy with the proposed community update. Another concern is that our two new Commissioners have not had enough time to get a good grasp on these complicated land issues. They are trying, and that's clear by the questions that they have been asking at the county meetings. With having served less than three months on the board, hopefully they will welcome this extension so that they can make a well-informed final decision on the community, on updating community plans for Baum and WyMama. I hope that in that extra time, concerns over ag preservation, community benefits, and affordable housing confusion can be resolved. Please vote to extend the moratorium for 120 days, and I would like for my comments to be incorporated into all the hearings tonight for RP2 and WBR2. Thank you for your time.
And Bonnie Alor, who I called out before, but she was not available then. Is she here now?
She does not seem to be on the line, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Wendy Heath?
Wendy emailed me and said that she had an emergency and had to leave the call.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move to Buddy Harwell.
Buddy, are you on the line with us? Can you hear us?
Mr. Harwell?
I do not, I see him online. I don't think he can hear us. Buddy, if you can hear us, are you recognized? He does not seem to be responding, Madam Chair.
He's an important person to hear from. Okay, having that, we are finished with our list, actually. I'm going to have to take one minute here, but I just want to know if there are any closing remarks at this point with regards to this, because we've heard from all the participants who signed up for public comment, and I wondered if there's any closing statements by the Planning Commission staff.
Commissioners, we just stand ready for any questions you might have.
I'm, okay, I've just been informed that there's another list that came out a little bit later, which I didn't have a copy of here, so I'm going to call off and see who we have there. We have Vivian Handy. Is Ms. Handy available?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Handy.
Hello?
Yes?
Okay. Okay, well, I wanted to speak a little bit about the community benefits and the fact that I don't think that the whole purpose of the moratorium was to address the lack of infrastructure keeping up with growth and making architectural types a little bit different. Three different, four different kinds instead of three does not do anything for our traffic But I feel that in light of all the comments about the Wetland Density Credits, I need to speak up on behalf of the wetlands. Wetlands are regulated, they are not protected. Any increase of density adjacent to wetlands will impact them. Wetlands and habitat are in decline, very similar to farmlands, and as far as property rights are concerned, I think that we cannot overlook the property rights of the rural community and the people that moved out to these rural areas to avoid traffic and congestion and to live in low-density areas, and the density credits will help to maintain the rights of those people who purchased in rural areas in good faith. There was a comment made about how are we going to accommodate 700,000 new people? I don't know, but it doesn't need to be here in South County, where clearly we already are suffering from too much too soon. Regarding extending the moratorium, just real quickly, I am here at home in WyMama, and I cannot see the live streaming or the U2. I do not have the internet service, so I can speak personally to the fact that it is not easy to participate in these public forums. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move to the next speaker. I have Samantha Solis?
I believe Samantha has dropped off the line.
Thank you. Victor Tovar?
Victor does not seem to be on the line. He did not call in.
Thank you. Michael Fabro?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear? Okay, great. I'm the president of the Baum Civic Community Association, and in all respect for the agriculture and landowner parts, Mr. Carlton mentioned unintended consequences, and unintended consequences of what we're allowing out there, and this is about the wetlands and why we had requested that be removed, is truly because the county is so far behind on the infrastructure. I personally own a medical service business where Mr. Carlton and them want to talk about Wanda, that they're, how it affects them financially. I pay technicians an extra two hours a day to service the same area because of the unprecedented, uncontrolled growth that has been going on in our area, and we do not by any means want to affect the agriculture, and we would gladly sit down with them, but we have been doing this for three years. This isn't something new as is being proposed, and we would, so the moratorium, we would support the moratorium be extended so that all of us could get together, but light pollution, quality of life, safety, et cetera. Wanda spoke about her farming business, but across the street from me sold 700 acres to Tico for solar, which obviously I'm sure they got a good dollar for that. There's no agriculture going on on a 700-acre solar field. The $47,000-plus that was paid to Agmark, I don't know who decided that that was a fair amount, but that was 700-plus acres that was going to have houses, 2,500 of them, on 40-by-50-foot lots, which is not in any means compatible with the area. So where this is coming from, and if we have to separate agriculture from when those that own that land then decide to sell it, as opposed to borrowing money for agriculture, if they want to grow, have cattle and all that, and leave us alone out there, we're perfectly fine with that, but you want those credits, that was, as again, 700 acres, 2,500 houses. There was not a tomato being grown on that. So using it as an agriculture, and we're against them, we are not. We're for quality of life. The lady that just spoke told you the same thing. We live in rural areas for a reason, and what has been going on is nothing more than figuring out how to put an urban plan in a rural area, and we are against it. And not counting the wetlands to add more houses to where we live has nothing to do with taking away from agriculture. We do not want it to affect them, but something has to change so our non-agriculture life is the quality of life that we have, want, and desire. Bottom line, county needs to catch up with their part. They're nowhere near catching up, so just keep extending the moratorium until they do. Development is not curing Hillsborough County's financial problems.
Excuse me, sir, your time is up. Your time is up, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes?
This is Dan with Hillsborough County Communications. Oh, I believe we have Buddy Harwell back on the line.
Great, okay. Mr. Harwell, you're recognized.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, we can, sir.
I just want to point out these virtual meetings suck. I mean, we need to open up the county, we need some live meetings, we need face-to-face meetings. Every meeting that I've seen has resulted in the same thing over and over again. I just want to say I have all due respect for the farmers and ranchers. I mean, they keep this nation alive, but without them, you know, we're going to be dependent more on China the more that they sell out, so there has to be something we can do with the federal government. Wetland density, I agree, we need to do away with. I just want to ask, if they can't grow crops on the wetlands, then how are they losing money by selling the property and not building, building the houses? Affordable housing shouldn't be in rural area, always in the USA. The TDRs, it needs to just go from rural to USA. It shouldn't be from rural to rural. You're just moving the problem from one place to another. As far as the burns in the 250-foot against ELAP, Ross Dickerson's from ELAP a year ago mentioned, the reason they need the 250-foot setbacks is when they do prescribe burns next to all these subdivisions, they got houses butted up to the proper line, and the residents are coming out complaining, so that's one reason. The burns along the road, we don't need those at 50-foot, because they just, they stop the flow of the water coming off and just floods the roads. We don't have pipelines and everything to take away the water. Sounds like we might need to extend this a little bit longer, but like I say, we got high schools we can meet out in the football fields, gymnasiums, all kinds of places, so I just want to put this on all the meetings tonight, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harwell. Liz Gutierrez?
Hello, good evening.
Good evening, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Liz Gutierrez. I am the CEO of Enterprise in Athanas, an organization that promotes women's economic opportunity. I'm very pleased to speak to you tonight. I'll remind you that two years ago, we joined forces with the WyMama Community Development Corporation, and together set out to figure out how best we could bring economic opportunities to WyMama, given the high incidence of poverty among the population. We were concerned then that the growth of housing development, while having the potential to be an important economic engine that could bring new economic opportunities to many of WyMama's low-income populations, could also, if not designed well, end up causing harm by forcing people to lose their jobs in agriculture and losing the limited housing they already had. Some of the concerns we had are many of the ones that you hear tonight, and so here we are, fast-forwarded two years later, reviewing the results of a community planning process that we, as it happens, pushed for. I want to thank all of the County Commissioners, current and past, that saw the value in updating the neighborhood plan for WyMama. We also want to thank the Planning Commission and the teams that they hired to conduct the neighborhood planning process and the studies that have informed the plan. Unfortunately, despite the Planning Commission's best efforts, and even our own at Enterprise in Athanas and the WyMama CDC, we acknowledge that more work is needed to complete the plan. As you heard tonight, there are many questions about many policy measures that need a lot more study, that need a lot more analysis, and so we are asking for respectfully for more time, because we need this plan to deliver real community benefit in a regulatory framework that will absolutely catalyze revitalization for WyMama, particularly at downtown, and we need more time to bring this plan back to the community. As others have said, in WyMama, and in this time of this global pandemic, participating and engaging in public discourse about difficult and challenging material like the one that we're dealing with tonight is very hard, and then when you consider that we have to do this virtually in a population where 35% don't even have access to the internet, that becomes even more difficult. Our meetings are virtual, our conversations, our workshops, everything is virtual, which means it's not accessible, not accessible to everyone that we need to be at the table. So all I can say is that we have done the best that we can, but we need more time to ensure...
Ms. Gutierrez, I'm sorry, your time is up. I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Miguel Medina? And Miguel Medina?
Hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello? Yes, thank you for your time, Madam Chairwoman. My name is Miguel Medina. I work at Enterprise in Latinas. I urge you to help us make Wyomama Downtown a place where all residents can enjoy a safe place to live, work, play, and raise our families. We're excited about the promise of the neighborhood plan and its ability to create regulations and investments to make our visions real. I support extending the memorandum for 120 days so that we can finalize our community plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Gary Smolik?
My name is Gary Smolik. My family owns and has owned for 60 years agricultural property in Baum. My brothers and I grew up working long hours in the grows, and our sister managed them until their demise due to root weevils, citrus greening, and economic realities. At this time, the property remained in agricultural use through the cultivation of grow crops. We're not newcomers to this county. Our great-grandfather, Riley Weatherington, planted some of the earliest grows in Hillsborough County on the Calhous Field 150 years ago. Throughout the ensuing years, we've always remained pretty modest citrus growers and cattlemen. For instance, our Baum property is not large enough to meet the 160-acre threshold for enhanced RP2 density absent provision, allowing transfer of development rights between non-contiguous parcels. In fact, it's my understanding that perhaps only one or two parcels qualify in the Baum area under that proposed plan. As you know, land use regulations comprise a very complex and rather arcane area of expertise. It's difficult for a layperson to master the subject. Having reviewed the Plan Commission meeting from earlier this week, it appears the sentiment of those experienced members of that board was that this approval process is being somewhat rushed. However, based upon what I can glean from the extensive documents provided last week, my family's apparent concerns would be, one, the proposed zoning would allow smart development in only one or two parcels in the target Baum area. Two, the remainder of the parcels, smaller in size, would be greatly devalued due to the absence of a provision for transfer of development rights, together with the proposed strictures of open space, buffering, and/or community benefits. Three, by virtue of such action, the county would almost certainly guarantee a form of rural sprawl. Rather than clustering in a concise area to be serviced by sewer system and utilities efficiently, there would presumably be numerous five-acre tracts served by septic. And certainly, this model would not provide affordable housing. The requirement to purchase a large parcel in order to build a home would be prohibitively expensive. I guess I'm asking you to understand that our property in Baum passed down through generations. It's our family's legacy. Please do not reduce its intrinsic worth by adopting measures that inevitably remove value from it. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And with that, I do believe we are at the end of our list on the RP2, both in the community plan amendment and the LDC. And so with that, I know Commissioner White, you had asked to be recognized first, and I will. Is there somebody?
Sorry, Madam Chair, we have one more.
I'm sorry, you have a few more?
It's Rita Avacita?
Okay. I don't think I have that on my list here, but sure.
Okay. Can I start?
Yes. Can you state your name again, please?
Hi. Yes, ma'am. My name is Teresa Acevedo. I'm 42 years old. Teresa Acevedo.
Okay, you can begin.
Okay. I have been on a waiting list for the Florida Home Partnership Program for seven months, hoping to buy and build a home for myself and my little eight-year-old daughter. After losing my home in Puerto Rico to Hurricane Maria in 2017, I relocated to Wyomama. I worked as a mental health professional for 12 years, and now I'm a single and divorced woman for two years, and now I'm working at school. Depends on God, my efforts, and my hard work, and I don't give up. So I think that this opportunity of the program, if I do not have this opportunity in this moment, it is almost impossible for me to be able to buy a house on one salary. This program offers me the opportunity to offer my daughter a better quality of life, a safe home in an area where not only people with high economic income can live with dignity. I'm a responsible, full-city-stan, hard worker and responsible mother, and I want to be part of this blessing that, you know, the county can offer to all the citizens of Hillsborough County. I today, I raise my voice so that it can be heard and that land can be destined for the proper use and for the benefit of those who need it financially. As a single woman, I will need two or three jobs to get a home here right now. So we can have these resources in a homogeneous and fair way. So that valuable people like me, my daughter, we can also benefit. Please do not close the doors of Wyomama to such a wonderful program that changed lives of many. The planning available areas for future construction in the Wyomama rural area could be used to provide the invaluable opportunity for people like me to be self-sustaining with affordable prices for the lower but important middle-class population here, not just to large companies with big, huge economic interests. Wyomama is the rural area that actually I choose to have a better life in Florida, and I'm trying to not resign to wanting a good and safe home for my daughter and me in an economically affordable way. So please help us in a way that is possible to be this possible. Okay? So thank you for your time, and get the land for the better use. Thank you.
And who else? You'll have to tell me. You'll have to announce who's on the line, because I do not know.
Okay. So we have Mr. Edgar Martinez, who has signed up for items A, C, and D.
He has signed up for item A, C, and D. Okay.
Yes.
Yes, Commissioners, good evening, and thank you for your time tonight. I'd like my comments to carry over to the other items. My name is Edgar Martinez, and tonight I'm speaking mainly on the WVR2 plan update. I'm a member of the Wyomama Now Stakeholder Group and employee Enterprise in Latinas working in Wyomama. COVID-19, as you know, changed in-person meeting, created in-person meeting restrictions, and changed the customary in-person planning public input process, shifting the process to virtual meeting. Since 35% of Wyomama residents may not have limited, may not have access to technology, we're asking for an extension of the current moratorium to allow us to reach out to the community to discuss the final plan draft and gather public input before final adoption of the plan. It is important that the community understand how this plan will improve conditions in Wyomama and make the community a healthy place to live in. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And?
And I have Bryce Bowden.
I'm sorry? Bryce Bowden?
Bryce Bowden.
Sorry. Okay, you're recognized.
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Bowden?
Hi. Good evening, Madam. Good evening, Madam Chairman and the Commissioners. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bryce Bowden. I'm the Chair of the Wyomama Community Development Corporation. In my previous life, I was employed by Fortune 500 Corporation and was relocated through numerous cities. What I saw in my trial was similar to what I see in Wyomama. Development, not the development is bad, but how it is done is the question. For instance, if you take, look at Washington DC and Capitol Hill. Capitol Hill used to be predominantly black, blue-collar workers, not today. Chicago near north was predominantly low-income, high-rise apartments, not today. Pittsburgh's similar. And I can go on and on and on and on and talk about this. But what I want to get to is the thing about the particular plan. What happened in those communities, the residents were displaced. They either moved to a new location, which they were overburdened financially for housing costs, and some even became homeless. So they, and they had no input as to what the development plan was. What is happening in the Wyomama area due to the global pandemic, the lack of technology in the community, and inconsistencies in the plan, you know, I'm requesting that there be an extension of the current moratorium for 120 days to allow the residents to complete the planning process in partnership with the Planning Commission team. And I ask that my comments be associated with the other items on the agenda. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. And do we have anyone else on the line?
I believe that concludes four items A and B.
Okay.
For public comment.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. And with that, then, we will move, and I will recognize Commissioner White had asked that he be recognized first, and we will do that. Commissioner White?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. As I mentioned, both these planning areas are in my district. I'll just focus on RP2 since that's the one we're on right now. I know the area well. I grew up down there, and I know many of these families. And I do believe wholeheartedly that it is possible to make the policies in the RP2 area better without taking away the property rights of landowners. It is clear to me that COVID has impacted the work on this and that face-to-face outreach has been difficult. We also have the inconsistency finding from the Planning Commission in front of us. As I understand it, that was a unanimous vote. This is simply not ready to transmit. So what I'd like to accomplish tonight is to not transmit these items to the state, to extend the moratorium, to give staff more time to get back to the drawing board. There's clearly a lot of work that still needs to be done, and to get these items on a new cycle to be heard. And for those of you that are in the queue for the Wyomama Comp Plan Amendment and LDC drafts, if you'll listen to the motion that I'm about to make, I intend to make substantially the same motion when we get to the WVR2 item, if that will help to make the comment portion move along more quickly. The public hearing portion, that is, move along more quickly. So at this time, I move that we not transmit HCCPA 20-11, and that the Board direct the County Attorney's Office to draft an ordinance extending the moratorium enacted pursuant to ordinance 20-11 to December 31, 2021, and to schedule public hearings for March 3 at 9:00 a.m. and April 7 at 9:00 a.m. to consider adoption of the ordinance. The purpose of the extended moratorium is to allow time for staff to obtain additional stakeholder input on the proposed comprehensive plan and Land Development Code amendments, and recognition of the challenges experienced by some stakeholders in providing input during the COVID pandemic. I further move that HCCPA 20-11 and LDC 21-0288 be continued to a future cycle that aligns with the extended moratorium.
And I heard that was Commissioner Overman?
Yes.
Okay. And Commissioner Overman's made a second, so we have a motion, and a second by Commissioner Overman. And I see Commissioner Cohen would like to speak. You're recognized?
Thank you very much. I'll be brief. I'm going to support this motion. I think that there's no question that the COVID pandemic has made it virtually impossible for us to get the type of and quality of public input that is necessary when you're considering changes of this level of complexity. The one thing that virtually all, not all, but most of the speakers had in common tonight was discomfort with us moving forward with some element of what is here. And the unanimous finding by the Planning Commission certainly does not engender any confidence that moving this forward right now would be the right thing to do. I know that as a new commissioner, getting my arms around these items has been challenging. I've been attempting as much as I can to learn about a lot of this as quickly as I can, but without the benefit of the type of public input that would be available during a normal time, it really is much more complicated. So with that, I just want to say that where I really am with all of this is very open-minded and very much interested in hearing a lot more discussion from people in the community who are stakeholders so that we can make absolutely sure that we are making the right decisions.
Thank you. I wonder about using the term virtually impossible anymore. And Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I'm going to support the motion. It's clearly what everybody in the community is almost is asking for, is time to work on this. But while we are taking this time, I want to quickly mention a few things I would like to see achieved in that time. And one of the main things is to find a way to make, to solve the problem that we were facing, which led to these moratoriums and this effort, the major problem of development overwhelming infrastructure in South County. As, you know, we've talked about this at several meetings, so I won't go into the details, but it's transportation, it's water, it's schools, it's fire. And at our last workshop, we were shown a slide that attempted to address this. So this is kind of a symptom of things moving quickly but needing more time to get fully baked. At our last workshop, we were shown this slide that said, for infrastructure, currently in these areas, they essentially, the developer is responsible for the capital costs of infrastructure. And the proposed text that we were shown last time was that the developer would be responsible for the capital costs of water, wastewater, fire, police, schools, transportation, infrastructure, parks, and libraries, and that shall all be the responsibility of the developer. And, this was added, and, all that infrastructure shall be provided prior to or concurrent with the development. Yay. Except, the items coming before us tonight have that last sentence removed. So we need to go back to the drawing board and work on some kind of timing elements, some teeth that ensure not only that the developer pays impact fees, which is what it means when it's, that's all you're going to get when it says the capital costs of the facilities will be provided by the developer, yet you'll get impact fees for all that. But we need to make sure that the infrastructure can actually be provided prior to or concurrent with the development, like the proposal we had but was stripped out. Because, for example, with water, sure, the developer can pay for the pipes and pay their water infrastructure and lay the pipes themselves, but how can we ensure there's going to be water to fill those pipes at the same time the houses are built and turning on their faucets, unless there's some kind of element of timing and concurrency to guarantee that? Similarly, with roads, they can pay mobility fees, but, and we have something in here saying, oh, okay, but they're, and they won't get design exceptions unless the right-of-way isn't available. Well, that's always the trouble with the design exceptions, is we need to have the design exceptions, the developer will say, because we don't, there's not right-of-way on these narrow little country lanes that are now being, having very large subdivisions put on them, putting 20,000 trips a day plus a school. And so we need to ensure not only that the developer is paying some specific impact fee, but that the infrastructure is in fact possible, that the right-of-way is there in some way, whether the developer donates it or in some other way. And on and on with the rest of the infrastructure. It's not just a matter of money. I want to point out that the RP2 lot sizes mentioned by Mr. Franklin and Mr. Fabro are another problem I think needs to go, be addressed as we go back to the drawing board. The residents and the... Um, the residents and the, uh, people, the citizens have, uh, and us have been shown very high-level presentations promising that, uh, the new plans will, uh, bring, uh, development that is more compatible with the communities of Baum and WyMama because in the rural area, instead of, you know, a thousand forty-foot-wide, uh, cookie-cutter, uh, boxes of houses, they will do a mix of housing types and lot sizes. And that sounds great. That sounds like what we wanted at the high level. But as I dug into the actual text of the Land Development Code, I found what those gentlemen were talking about tonight as they dug in, and, and this is why we need more time to refine the devil in the details. Um, the lot sizes proposed in the Land Development Code for RP2 are smaller in the rural area out in RP2 outside of Baum, smaller than the lot size is required in the urban area of Ruskin, where I live. In the urban area of Ruskin, inside the urban air, the service area, um, uh, the, the, our Land Development Code requires lots of 7,000 and 8,000 square feet, depending on the area, with a small number of 5,000 and 6,000 square feet, uh, lots, and they have to be a minimum of 60-foot wide. In this rural area of Baum, the Land Development Code says, "No, they can be 40-foot-wide lots and be 4,000 square feet." That's a lot smaller, uh, than, um, than they are allowed even in the urban area of Ruskin. So that's not matching the character of Baum, and I don't think people have really had a chance to dig into that and, um, make sure, that they're not gonna be surprised five years from now when development starts happening, they say, "I thought we were getting a mix of, uh, compatible lot sizes," and it turns out they are, um, they're not. Um, the transfer of development rights is a problem I'm concerned about. Uh, there's still some areas, that was the one place that, uh, the RP2 was allowing additional density, um, by adding density to the north section. I've said this before, up by Rodine Road and Baum Riverview Road, where we are really running into traffic problems, and they are our next congestion problem. Um, and, and adding density there, um, we need to be ensured that it wouldn't, uh, worsen the traffic beyond the level of service of those roads. And, um, you know, finally, I, um, uh, among other things, but those are, those are the high points, I support the, um, elimination of wetland density bonuses. Um, I don't understand the finding that it's inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan, um, uh, given that it's already in the Comprehensive Plan. It's in the Comp Plan in Ruskin, in the urban area, uh, we don't allow wetland density bonuses. In Keystone Community Plant, we don't allow wetland density bonuses. It's not a taking, it's a matter of policy. It's a matter of protecting the wetlands and, um, not giving away, uh, imaginary density of, for wetlands where you can't build anyway. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a fantasy that, that you have entitlements there to give away. So, uh, those are, I just wanted to, um, highlight some thoughts that I think need to be addressed moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity. I'll keep this short. Um, clearly, there are some details that, that need to be worked on, and, you know, it, it sounds like we haven't been working on this, but I know we have. I know our Planning Commission's worked very hard to try and figure out how to have, uh, community meetings. Um, but as we have seen, even in tonight, it's difficult when you're engaging in it, especially in a community that's lacking, uh, internet service and internet resources, especially as complex as it is, is trying to build suburbia in an area that is historically rural and, uh, and very agricultural, not just rural, but agricultural. Um, I, I'm, you know, two years into this and I'm still wondering how, you know, two houses per acre is rural. Um, and so it, it is one of those circumstances where the, 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 there needs to be the purpose of protecting the rural lands and, and the design associated with doing so, but also taking into consideration where some suburban urbanization is occurring and allow that growth to grow from there, within it and from there. So I've continued to said, suggest that as an area grows, as WyMama has, and they want more density and have the need for affordable housing, makes more sense than trying to plop it in the middle of a farmland somewhere. So I think it's critically important that we have more time to work on this. And, um, and Ms. Abramson, when you mentioned there were 90 meetings, I don't believe if we counted the number of meetings that included just the citizens who live in that community, the number would be far less than 90. Um, I maybe I'm wrong, but the three or four pages there included a lot of folks that weren't necessarily the folks that actually lived there. So I, I do believe that it would be beneficial to take time. My only question is, you know, 120 days sounded like a really long time the last time we addressed this. And, um, but we also weren't in, anticipating a pandemic. And so, um, and when we discussed that moratorium for a period of time, um, there was a limitation on the number of extensions that we could do that was discussed at that time, if I'm not mistaken. And I, Ms. Lundgren, if you're available, I don't see you on the screen, but,
She is here.
I think it's, and I think it's important that we understand, um, whether it's, you know, 120 days or another planning cycle, that, uh, we, we still don't have a read on how long it will take for us effectively to address the condition of a pandemic. We may not be in as much of an emergency as we were earlier in the, in this process, but, but the, the fact is, if people are still not vaccinated or unable to come out or unable to feel as though they're safe to do so, we are gonna still see a challenge with getting the community input without using some significantly innovative ways, uh, to address that community input. Um, so I'm, I wanna check with the motion,
And, and just, just for the record-
To address that particular question.
We, we can do that, but also for the record, I believe that, um, and Commissioner White, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't you say to December 21st, 2021?
December 31st.
31st, I'm sorry.
Essentially to the end of the calendar year.
Yes, so his, his motion was, so that you, in case you misunderstood the motion, Commissioner Overman was till December 31st, 2021. And, um, I don't know if the, I, I know this was, um, uh, the attorneys have, you know, I don't know if one of the attorneys wants to speak to this? Ms. Lundgren?
Commissioners, um, that timeframe, I believe, uh, has been, you know, been considered by the Planning Commission staff, by Ms. Zornita, um, to be an adequate amount of time in which the work can be completed and to be necessary based on the ongoing and unprecedented pandemic, um, issues. I'm not sure if, uh, Ms. Zornita needs to speak to that, um, but I believe that that seems to be, um, an adequate amount of time at this point and to be justified if the Board finds, finds it, uh, appropriate at this time to move forward and direct that extension.
Okay, so I, my question is, is, for example, not in this format of a conversation, but in the B-O-C-C's format of a, you know, we're wearing B-S-O-B-O-C-C hat, it's likely that it'll take us several months just to populate or just to vaccinate, you know, 200,000 seniors, um, you know, until maybe April. Um, there is another 800,000 folks, you know, that are still in need of vaccination or more, but, you know, before, between now and December, if that's the case, so that the folks in this community might feel comfortable coming out. So, I, in lieu of not being able to guess what that's gonna look like and pray that it takes quicker than December to get that done, can Ms. Zornita give us an idea of some of the things she might utilize or tools that she may, may be able to utilize to make sure that outreach doesn't hijack this process once again, that we cannot apparently extend beyond one more time?
Certainly. Um, of course, I can't make any guarantee that the outreach over the next, the rest of this year will, um, be satisfactory. We will do our absolute best. Um, we've, uh, talked internally about ideas like having some outdoor meetings at parks, um, utilizing, um, some smaller group meetings. Um, uh, Mary Ann and the team have been meeting, you know, frequently with some of the smaller groups like the Baum Civic Association, so we could continue to foster some opportunities like that, building on that with the agricultural community and other folks. Um, those are some of the ideas that we've kind of quickly come upon. Um, I'm sure there are others, um, and we will do our best to, uh, get this done sooner than the end of the year, um, but, um, but certainly appreciate you giving us the, the, that timeframe to work with.
Okay, I'll stop there.
And Ms. Lundgren, I think, wanted to comment as to this. Attorney?
Just to address the potential for, uh, future extension of the moratorium, you know, we don't necessarily know what the conditions may be in the future, and I do not believe we're necessarily limited to, uh, to this extension if the circumstances change and the Planning Commission had, uh, further difficulty with the process to provide for public engagement. But I think at this time, we're hearing from Ms. Zornita that she would find the proposed extension to be appropriate in light of these circumstances.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I see no other commissioners, uh, that, at this time, that want to be recognized, and I'll just say that I'm very much supporting, uh, the motion. I think it's very important, um, particularly because of, uh, COVID, but maybe, uh, I mean, we have, I think, uh, taken a, a good, um, started a good discussion on, uh, where this can go, but I think we definitely, um, need more and more information and, uh, further time to do this. I'll just say today, just unrelated, but, um, I was speaking with our solid waste department who told me that each new resident that comes to Hillsborough County, um, e- each of us is responsible for about one ton of trash a year and that our, our, our waste-to-energy plant is at capacity, and so they're having to start landfilling, uh, more and more, and every new resident will bring, I mean, that's not even something we've even talked about or contemplated, but, I mean, there's just so much. And, and Rodine Road, um, I know for the new commissioners, but, uh, I know that for the commissioners that have been here, Rodine Road has been a source of utter and absolute pain, and, uh, that's, uh, right in the, uh, RP2 area that we're talking about, and it is, um, it is a, uh, in a terrible state. Uh, again, um, I very strongly, um, in fact, brought it forward, the elimination of the wetland density bonuses. It's a pla- it's a place where we have to move, uh, in order to, uh, start to reasonably look at how we, uh, look at development and, uh, move forward in the future, uh, with regards to that. Um, and as well, I, I wanted to say, uh, and Commissioner Smith, um, touched on this, but I was rather shocked, I don't know how I missed it, but I guess in our Comprehensive Plan, uh, we now provide for libraries to, uh, WyMama, um, and I guess to, to both the RP2 and the WV2, it says in our Comprehensive Plan, it has said that for a number of years, but there's, um, and I see this missing all the time. There's no, um, nothing that makes that occur. It's kind of a, a nice plan that's put in there, but there is no mechanism for making those libraries appear. So they've been promised already for some 30 years, uh, but there's no, absolutely no mechanism to do that. So it's not really a real thing. It's just in our, it's already in our language and they started to repeat it. Um, and I will say for the record, uh, we've been talking about different impact fees, and I've been, I've looked around many, many places around the state, and there are impact fees, and they're not, um, that, uh, large relatively speaking, but in the county just to the south of us, Manatee County, they do have impact fees for libraries, for, um, law enforcement, in other words, sheriff stations, and also for public buildings, community space, um, uh, for, uh, communities. Uh, and they're much like a fee that's, um, somewhat equal to, uh, what, uh, our fire station and fire rescue fees are here. Um, but they're not the only counties, many counties around have, uh, those added, um, fees, and I think that would make sense in terms of, uh, capital. And I would love to see, um, us be able to do small, uh, types of libraries and community spaces for small, uh, towns that are part of our unincorporated county for town centers. Um, but there is no, uh, capacity or income for us to do that unless we were to do something like have an impact fee, uh, for libraries. I like to get away from these big regional ones and look at ones that can really build, uh, a sense of community in a small space. So I'll just, uh, put that out there, um, now, and with that, I think Commissioner Myers, I didn't see any hand up, I'm sorry, but, uh, go ahead and, um, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Com- Commissioner White, thank you so much for making that, that motion and your comments because it was right on time for what the citizens are asking us to do, and as a Board, we listened to extend it to, uh, December 31st. And I would just like to ask those who attended the public hearing, uh, when the Planning Commission comes to your community, and I shared this with Ms. Zornita, um, consider having outdoors, outside events, uh, maybe our park and Recreation Department can help where we can have the chairs outside for social distancing, and that you can share with your family and friends to attend so that you can give us the needed input that you have expressed tonight that would help us with our plan. So with that being said, I say thank you to those who called in and took, and have taken the time to share your comments with us. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. And seeing, uh, I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody out there, uh, I don't see any other commissioners that are, um, want to comment, so, uh, seeing no further discussion at this point, I will ask a clerk to please take the roll call.
Kemp?
Yes?
Cohen?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And we're now on to, um, uh, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, uh, for, uh, the WV2, um, both the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, livable communities element, the, uh, future land use element, and the related Land Development Code. And again, um, in case, for those that weren't here during the, uh, RP2 segment of this, we're combining, um, the three, actually, three comment sections that I have on this one, uh, and every person listed on it will be entitled to, uh, three minutes, uh, but only once during the, the time, and we have quite a long list. Uh, but we'll start with, um, Ms. Zornita, if you could please, um, introduce us. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Jay Collins with Planning Commission staff will make a brief presentation. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Zornita. Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners, good evening again, Jay Collins.
I'm sorry, can you, um, Mr. Collins, can you somehow get more volume?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me now?
A little better, even a little more would be good, but if you, that's, um, that sounds, we can hear you much better.
Looking to see about, 'cause they changed my volume earlier when I actually came on. I'm looking to see if I can change my volume.
And I don't know if we can do anything at this end or not, but, anyone who can, if we could get a little more volume.
Jay, this is James. I apologize. Hit that drop down arrow on the mute button and then click Settings. Under the microphone, there's a volume control there. Let's go ahead and increase that volume to where it was earlier.
Do I need to stop sharing to do that?
Um, I believe so, yes, sir. It'll, it'll certainly make it easier.
All right, we're going through this, going to Settings. And then we'll turn this back up just a little bit.
Oh, that's much better.
Okay, that's wonderful. All right, let me go back to share. Again, my name is Jay Collins with the Planning Commission, and with me tonight is Taryn Sabia from the University of South Florida. She is the consultant on this project, and we do have three different parts to talk about. I don't know if it's coming up.
It's not coming up yet. It looks like it's starting in a minute.
This is the update to the Y-Mama Community Plan. Here we go. The update to the Y-Mama Community Plan, again, that community plan was adopted in 2007. This is the first update to a community plan in Hillsborough County. Part of that community plan is the land use, the Y-Mama Village Residential 2. So there's a policy update of that land use. There's also some implementation for both that land use in the community plan. There is not currently a zoning for WVR2, and also the community plan asks for zoning in downtown Y-Mama, both of which are being accomplished through this process. And I'm sorry, but the PowerPoint is not going any, it's not progressing. James at HTV, is it possible for you to please actually open yours up, and we'll go for, we'll do a next on it? I'll stop sharing?
Certainly, we'll share right now, sir.
Thank you.
Standby, Jay. I'll go ahead and share it for you. You want to unshare your screen? Thank you. Standby.
So this just shows us even when we do have the internet and we have technology, we have these issues. So you can imagine with some of our community members who don't have access to the internet, what we're going through.
Or commissioners.
Yes, ma'am.
And Jay, this is Glenn with HTV. Whenever you're ready to read the slide, just let me know, and I'll move the slide for you.
Thank you. I do appreciate that. Next slide, please. So this just gives you a little bit of the background of our outline of where we have been. Again, this goes through the Community Planning Guide. So at the beginning of this process, everybody received mail notification who owns property in the Y-Mama Community Plan boundary. Again, in November, everybody received mail notice for all individuals who own property in the Community Plan boundary. And then you can see about every other month that we went ahead and had either something online or we had something in person. Next slide, please. Again, this is the structure of what we're about to do between the two plan amendments and the LBC. Next slide, please. So the first that we'll talk about is HCCPA 2012. This is the update to the community plan, specifically the update to the livable communities element. Next slide, please. This is the vision for the community plan. The community plan document itself is a little over 100 pages. The document itself is not adopted. What is adopted are portions that go in the livable communities element, and there are some goals, and we'll talk about those goals. In this area, you can look at what's at the bottom of your screen, primarily that framework of mobility, form and character, environment, and cultural capital. Next slide, please. So these are some of those tenets that we just talked about from the vision that are carried forward through some of our conversations with the community. And you'll see these themes carried forward in the presentation, the circulation, how do people get around Y-Mama, that, that form. You have a small town. How do we incentivize that small town? And as we build out from that small town, whether it's through initial development or redevelopment, that we keep that in mind. Environment and open space. We've heard a lot about the agricultural community tonight. We've heard a lot about environmental preservation tonight. And then finally, cultural capital and community. This is basically the storytelling that goes on in a community plan, and how it's important for those stories to live somewhere going forward for that community. Next slide, please. So as planners, what can we do? As planners, we can write policy that provide development opportunities, that provide affordable housing opportunities or multimodal opportunities. These are all things that are exemplified through the strategic action plan that you have in the update to the community plan. Infrastructure and public realm opportunities, this is something we can write, we can write policy towards, but it's still something that takes a lot more than just a policy, obviously, to get that done. But the infrastructure is laid out to talk about what's important to Y-Mama, such as that water and sewer along 674 and other areas in downtown Y-Mama to support. Business development opportunity, educational opportunities, and health and wellness opportunities. These really talk about things that are public-private partnerships, and also take a champion in the community to bring those forward when that community is looking for grant opportunities, or if that public, or excuse me, that private individual is looking for funding for Hillsborough County. Next slide, please. So this is part of the first goal that we have for the livable communities element, and this is the density within the WVR2 category. So the WVR2 category specifically talks about how you can integrate and build on the Y-Mama Community Plan. So the density, the density has changed slightly by how you calculate the density, and we've talked about that with the Upland. It is still a base density of one unit to five acres, and then two units to the acre as the upper end of that. It has been clustered at four units to the acre. Currently, the clustering is at three and a half. There is a 40% set aside currently that is asked for of open space. That's been modified to a 30% contiguous and a 10% internal. That internal might be trails, or it might be stormwater that's open for recreation. Next slide, please. Again, what we just talked about with that connectivity, open space, and clustering within the land use, and how it relates to the form of Y-Mama's community plan. Next slide, please. So another community goal is transfer of development rights. This is something we, again, have heard about tonight. So there is a sending and a receiving zone that's identified. The rece, the sending zone is the WVR2 land use in the rural service area. The sending, excuse me, the receiving zone is the urban service areas, particularly around the Main Street downtown area, and we'll show you that in a little later. Also, there is a stacking of TDRs with the affordable housing density bonuses that are permitted within the urban service area in the same area as an incentive. Next slide, please. Further on affordable housing, there is also a bonus within that TDR for the urban service area. A comment that we received from the board at one of our previous workshops was to remove the WVR2 bonus for affordable housing, which has been done. Another comment that we received from the board is to more closely match the area median income requirements to Y-Mama and not to the county as a whole. And so we've attempted to integrate that with the help of the Affordable Housing Department in Hillsborough County. Next slide, please. Another goal in the area is infrastructure. And again, this goes back to that, looking at how we can prioritize. So again, there is a prioritization plan for downtown Y-Mama. Spoke a little bit about that earlier. And there's also that idea of civic spaces and engagement spaces, and this goes to some of that last form with cultural capital and community. And then providing beautification and Florida-friendly landscaping, something of a unified code, if you will, which is something that's proposed so that downtown has a uniformal look. Next slide, please. So within 674, there are various districts. Today, there are various districts. In the future, those districts are reimagined. It's not a wholesale change. It's just an idea of can we do a little bit more to actually incentivize the area? So as you'll see, this gray darkened area, that is actually the TDR receiving zone. The outlined black area or that's within that gray area, that is the Main Street. The Main Street has been somewhat lessened than what it is in the existing community plan due to the market study that we received from WTL. And you'll also notice the Y-Mama East District that you have there, which is a special district in that it is the only area that allows for industrial and commercial uses in the WVR2. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. Next slide, please. So our next item is HCCPA 2013, and that is the WVR2 portion out of the future land use element. Next slide, please. So this blue-gray area that you see outlined here, that is the WVR2. The areas that are completely grayed out, that is the urban service area. In the areas that are basically white, that you can see the, the blue going through, which is water, that's the rural service area. And then you can see the outline of the Y-Mama Community Plan. The WVR2 is not proposed to increase in size at all. Next slide, please. So there's been a lot of conversation about the removal of the wetland density credit. This is the proposed policy for WVR2. This is basically a carbon copy of what you would see in the RP2, less the differences for the actual CPA numbers. Next slide, please. So there is a relationship in WVR2 with 674 about employment. The idea here is that jobs will appear on 674 that will then have a relationship with homes that are built in the WVR2 and the other way around. Basically, it says every time you build homes, there should be jobs on 674 to support that residential. That as a policy has not worked in this area. So we're looking at alternatives that will actually encourage employment. So one of the ideas that we thought of is if that is removed as a policy, we would have the community benefit options, much like what you see in RP2. Next slide, please. Some of the other proposed changes, and these are very similar to what you saw in the RP2, are to bring in Vision Zero principles, school sites that are more than 50 units to actually have, look for school sites, residential support uses that will not count against residential densities within the WVR2, as well as to promote agricultural uses. Agriculture is already a permitted use within the WVR2 when you do build those residential units to two units to the acre. But what we're looking at here is how can we can better integrate those agricultural uses, agri-hoods, cooperative farming, and the like. Next slide, please. So our final item to talk about is the actual land development code. Next slide, please. And again, there is not an actual code currently for the land use of WVR2 in the downtown overlay, both of which, however, all called out in the original 2000 plan to do just that. Next slide, please. So again, we have an issue with, or we have the use of a variety of different lot types here. There's a minimum of four. You want the clustering to go with that. Accessory dwelling units are allowed throughout there. And you see a variety of different types of lot types, because the idea here is that the developer would have the options of how they want to best actually market their site. Next slide, please. With that is an extensive idea of a network design and community design for the roads and the trails through those communities, and how those communities are better connected to existing lands and future lands for development. Next slide, please. We talked a little bit about community benefits earlier. Again, you can see them here. One difference of community benefits here in WVR2 from RP2, since you can develop WVR2 properties at five acres or greater, RP2 was 50 or 160, these are looked at as 25 units or less, 26 to 50 units, 51 to 75. So it's asking one, two, or three community benefits as you go up those rings for the number of homes you're building. Next slide, please. And finally, again, what we talked about with some of the different districts that are along 674. One of the things, if you've actually been down 674, you'll notice one of the newer businesses they do have is a dollar store. That dollar store was built off of policies from the future land use element. So that dollar store is pushed up towards 674, the sidewalk, everything towards the front of it, and the parking is on the side and in the rear. So all of those policies were removed from the future land use and put into a code to go ahead and, and better formulate that going forward. Also, with the idea of the Y-Mama East End, you'll also notice that all of that language that was in the WVR2, in the future land use element, has been lifted out of that and put that also into the code to support the idea of industrial and commercial uses in that area in the East End. Next slide, please. And this just shows a representation, again, of what the Main Street may look like. By no means are you required to build something like that, but these are all options that you would have. You would have that option of the awnings, the railings, the two floors, again, the second or third floor, if it is residential, does not count against you for your FAR. So there's a lot of development tools that are put into that overlay, into the zoning code, to support residential development as well as commercial development in downtown. Next slide, please. And this is our final slide, again, I'm sorry, there we go. And this is our final slide, again, reiterating some of the same Planning Commission sentiment that came from the RP2, in that, again, the wetland density credit is not supported, and also the removal of the proposed affordable housing density bonus. Again, this was a proposed policy, not a current adopted policy, but a proposed policy that also was not supported by the Planning Commission. And again, they had the same sentiment that WVR2 and the community plan update required more time. Thank you for your time. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. And seeing that presentation, where are, are we prepared now to open the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing. Again, I said three minutes, and we're just going to go down the list. No one will be able to speak to, you'll have a single three-minute per person. Quite a long list. And I'll start out recognizing Bonnie Ailer. Is Ms. Ailer available? She was not, I don't think, on the first time. I think she was first there, too. Is staff? Technical staff? Do we have? Are we, do we have the speakers queued up?
Bonnie is not on the call.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Sandy Council?
Congratulations to the new members, and thank you for your committee, your commitment to public service. This evening, I was going to address process and the return of WVR2 affordable housing, housing density bonus. But in light of the Commissioner White's motion and your approval, I reiterated a lot, a lot of my comments. As president of the Ruskin Community Development Foundation, whose mission is to develop and improve the community, we have been staunch supporters of the planning process for 26 years. With Ruskin being the first community to navigate through the community planning process, I understand more than most the importance and impact of community involvement and input. Engaging the public and building consensus are probably two of the biggest challenges, but they are the foundation and essential to guarantee the whole community has a voice. With inclusion and equity being brought to the forefront, this should be given even more importance. I strongly believe the people in the area that would be living with the outcomes of the plan should have the loudest voice, all of which hinges on trust. The trust that the information I'm being given is accurate and current, trust that my investment and time to participate in study my investment and time to participate and study the data which I base my decisions on will be taken into consideration, and finally, trust that the recommendations or the outcomes will reflect the community's desire. Wyomama desperately needs affordable housing. For so many of the Wyomama community, access to affordable housing in the form of a traditional single-family home with a yard translates to upward mobility, the capacity for higher social and economic position. Home ownership is one of the biggest wealth builders. So I'm begging you to help combat the affordable housing emergency and restore the public trust in that the process works and their voices will be heard loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Michael Peterson, you are recognized. Madam Chair, I see him on the line. He is not responding.
Okay, we'll just move on and we can go back.
Oh, you are, okay.
Sorry. So I want to incorporate my comments from the RP2 section. Wyomama's community and professional planners worked hard to produce a consensus recommendation reflecting balanced interest and proper planning principles. Yet tonight's proposals are not those recommendations after this board toppled our Jenga tower by pulling out blocks not to your personal liking and then threw some new ones in the pile. And here we only have three minutes total to respond after months of our efforts. This does not honor the community planning concept. We collectively recognize Hillsborough's continued growing pressures and chose to make Wyomama part of the solution on our terms instead of being ostriches putting our heads in the sand. We pursued market-based solutions to the affordable housing needs, hoping Florida Home Partnership's Ruskin successes could be replicated in Wyomama. That was critical for FHP as Ruskin will no longer qualify under USDA's funding criteria, but Wyomama will for at least a decade. Their model is not the downtown multifamily that survived your removals, which is also easier said than done. The WVR2 incentives were FHP's chance at serving the Wyomama community in coming years. I fear it's an opportunity lost. Why do you insist on pursuing the inefficiency of low densities only exacerbating the sprawl you complain of, even rejecting the minimal increase from two to three units per acre to foster affordable housing? You do the same by eliminating the modest wetland density credits in place for decades. This is madness. It's not coming out of true community planning efforts, hence the unanimous rejection by the planning commission. And beyond the harm to the planning itself, some of these poison pill maneuvers shouldn't allow you to further extend 18 months of moratorium to over two and a half years because of the chaos you created yourselves. Acceptance of the proposals coming out of the community and consultant's efforts could have easily beat the moratorium expiration. Further punishing landowners with additional moratoria because you threw grenades in at the last stages of the process is unfair, if not illegal. Many of us fear a death-by-delay strategy in play here. It's so easy for those not directly impacted to ask for so much from others, paying the price of these new restrictions, and to have more time of their frozen rights just continued on. When you count emails, speakers, or petition signatures, ask yourself, how many of them are the vacant landowners actually targeted by all these demands? Enough is enough, and again, I protest a bit that we're limited to three minutes for three public hearings after months of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is Vanessa Josie, Business Manager for Florida Home Partnership. For the last 18 years, I've had the great pleasure and opportunity to work with hard working residents of South County to become first-time homebuyers. Both my mother and I can personally speak of the joy of homeownership thanks to Florida Home Partnership's Self-Help Program. The success of our clients and program motivates me every day to continue to help others. Destiny Davis, featured in ABC Action News, You're About to View, has fulfilled her dreams, but it wasn't easy. While these stories have happy endings, the hundreds of residents on our prequalification list and thousands who have worked and contact us for information about our program may not be so fortunate if the affordable single-family language is not adopted. Thank you for your time, and please play the video.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I missed a name. Mary Bernardino?
Yes, thank you, boards and commissioners. My name is Mary Bernardino. I've been with Florida Home Partnership for the past 21 years, and in that time, I've helped many hundreds of families earn their American, make their American dream come true. I'm sorry. And I've also been a resident of Ruskin for the past 39 years. I know this is not part of our number, but we're in South Hillsborough County, and our housing program has helped hundreds of families, numerous of families that are very appreciative and heartbroken to hear that this is something that has been questioned. And also, too, a part of our associates, 11 of them have gone through our self-equity program. These are families that have earned their homes, and they are affordable homes because it's difficult out there for them. And all we ask is that you hear us out and plead for affordable housing to continue in South Region, and Wyomama especially. And I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm here. Yes, good evening, everyone. If I may, I want to go back to Vanessa Josie. She was supposed to play a video, and I think it's very important that you guys see in person or in video the impact that we do at Florida Home Partnership with our affordable housing program, not just the self-help program, which many of you might be familiar, where we actually take pride. I, myself, as an actual official participant of the self-help program, I can tell you, it changed my life completely. It made me feel stronger. It empowered me to take care of my home. It made me feel that I could do anything, and I would not let my home go down. Self-help program is assigned and designated for low and very low-income families. Those do work one or two jobs. They're single moms, single males, single females. Everybody is welcome to apply, and they're very hardworking trying to find affordable homes. Please put back the single-family home density bonus, especially for Hillsborough County, especially in the Wyomama area. Our very low-income families need it. As Vanessa said, we have hundreds of people on our waiting list. We have over 2,000 families asking about this program. They see it, they want to be part of this successful, affordable home. There's no other way that our low-income families can afford a regular housing market, whether mortgage payment over $1,000, when they're not at that income level. Our program is the only one in Hillsborough County that can say, "We offer new, affordable, and long-lasting homes for those families that have low to very low income." We need your support. We need your help to be able to afford the buy of this land, to be able to continue and expand our services. More than anything, we need to be able to help these families on the waiting list that have worked so hard and now are asking, "Where are we building? Where are we going?" And all we have to say is, "I'm sorry, we don't know. We have to wait." Commissioners, you have this decision. Please, don't let us down. Don't let your public down. Don't let your residents down. We want you to see the need of affordable housing, and there is a need. So all I'm asking you is to please bring back the single-family housing density bonus. Don't let the homeowners lose their dream of owning a home and create this sense of community, especially through the self-help program. If you can, please go back and play the video that was supposed to be playing earlier. You can see that impact that we create, not just as a family, but also as a community. We create that sense of community, and that's something that we need to bring back. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Communications. Just to clarify, we did not receive a video for tonight's meeting.
Okay, it would have had to been in, under the three-minute time anyway, but, okay, thank you.
Tanya, does that seem to be on the line? She spoke earlier.
Right. She was signed up again, but, okay. Tiffany?
I believe she dropped off the call.
Tiffany Freeman?
Chair, could I ask you a quick question before this next speaker speaks?
Yes.
There's, it sounds as though there were several representatives from the Home Partnership, maybe in lieu of showing the video which had not been submitted, that if any of their further commentators can reference a website where that video could be viewed by the board, it might offer as an alternative. And I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you. Tanya Burn, I already asked, Tiffany Freeman?
Yes, ma'am. Hi, I wanted to say that I want the continuous, continuance of the Wyomama homes because I'm a single parent myself of two girls, and I really don't make that much. And during, going through the COVID incident, it's kind of hard to change a job right now and try to make as much as you can to afford the homes that are out there in Wyomama. And I feel like we should have a continuous of the Florida Home Partnership, which has this car out here for people that are just single parents that want a better life for their kids, and in the areas that they do have nice houses that are affordable, but they're not in good neighborhoods. They don't have a better, better neighborhood than what Wyomama could offer for other people. I don't, I understand I want a house, but I'm not that desperate to get a house where my kid, I don't feel comfortable with my kids going outside. I want better for my kids. I want to provide more freedom, and I feel like Florida Home Partnership can do that for my kids. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I'm here. Hello, my name is Yvette Dickinson. I am a US Army veteran and a homeowner in the Ruskin area. I'm voicing my concern at how quickly the wording "Affordable Density Housing Credit" was discarded by people who do not live in the Wyomama area or raise their families in this area or even visited nor supported the Wyomama community. Affordable housing isn't a want, it's a need, it's a must. I went through the USDA Mutual Self-Help Program that is facilitated by Florida Home Partnership myself. This program can only build in rural areas. If you Google four words, "single, mother, housing, help," do you know what comes up? It's this reference to Section 8 and other HUD resources that offer rental assistance. Rental, nothing about buying a home. I left the Army 16 years ago to support my husband and his military career and to take care of our two little girls. Unfortunately, two years later, we did divorce. I became a single parent at the age of 25. I was also raised by a single parent. My mother, being a Mexican immigrant, she instilled in my sister an need for persistence, determination, and hard work. So she pushed me to find a way to buy a home for my girls. With my mother's support by allowing us to move in with her, I wanted to start saving to purchase a home. I thought with a VA loan, that would be possible, but I was wrong. Life is tough. Saving money was even more difficult. After two years of trying to save, I just was ready to go rent an apartment, as my mom heard about Florida Home Partnership and their program. I went to an appointment, FHP was able to convince me to apply for the program. They have affordable homes, something that I couldn't reach. Obviously, it was going to be hard work, but I was raised by Latina, so hard work didn't scare me. I moved forward with FHP and approximately one year later, in May 2008, not only did I graduate HCC with my associates, I was handed my keys to my home. I remember as my daughters and I walked through our front doors, the first door, the undeniable sense of pride and accomplishment we all felt, that thought of only my own home was one time only a dream. But through FHP and self-help program, my dream of building an affordable home became reality. Please return the language of Affordable Housing Density Credit, and don't take the dream of owning an affordable home from the one-home community and those going to work hard to build an affordable home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, this is Walter Walker. Good evening, commissioners. I am a board member of Florida Home Partnership, but I come to you this evening with more than two decades of experience in community development, more than two-thirds of which was time devoted to counseling and educating first-time homebuyers in the very low to moderate income categories. I worked in the Tampa-area Hillsborough County with Congresswoman Kathy Castor and Congressman Gus Billaracus on foreclosure prevention. I've done a lot of things in our community, and I've worked with a lot of the people who probably have bought houses out in Wyomama through the Florida Home Partnership program because I've taught over 30,000 students down through the years. And it has been my pleasure to help them get into their first home. If you've never talked to someone with the joy of their having gotten their first set of keys when they thought the possibility of homeownership was impossible, and you see the way the emotion, as was just expressed by the young woman ahead of me, there is no other feeling quite like it. I ask you, restore the Affordable Housing Density Bonus, help those people that are attempting to help themselves to achieve the American dream, to get their piece of that pie, so they can develop homeownership and go on to be able to purchase housing beyond their first home. It is important that we get people to the idea of owning, not just renting. And the small density increase that is being asked for for these houses is not a large problem for people once they come in, they get settled. If you've not been to one of their communities, I suggest you go tour and see how well those communities are maintained. It will put some other neighborhoods to shame. I'm very proud to have been a part and continue to be a part. I ask you again, restore the Affordable Housing Density Bonus for the Wyomama area so that the Florida Home Partnership can continue to do its job there. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you. Dennis Carlton Jr.?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to carry my statement from earlier to the other items tonight. I would, however, like to comment on some of the discussions earlier from the Commission in regards to the wetland density credit. I believe the word fantasy or imaginary density was used in regards to this issue. I want to try my best and give a clear example of how this is not the case. If I own a 10-acre block of land, whether it's a farm, pasture, whatever the case might be, that has a one-acre wetland on the back of it, and I want to sell five acres of this land to my friend, assuming an AR zoning, or one to five for this example, what happens now? What does that do to the evaluation of that piece of land that I own? He wouldn't be able to build on that lot. We live in Florida, we live in Hillsborough County, there are wetlands everywhere. We could use, I mean, we could use many other land examples, 20s or 40s, and how this is real. This isn't fantasy or imaginary density. Hopefully, I articulated this well enough to have everyone here grasp what this does to stakeholders, landowners, farmers, et cetera, and how awful of an idea of removing this density is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, this is James.
Yes.
This is to respond from Commissioner Overman's statement earlier. We have received that video from the citizen group, and we can play that at yours or the citizens' discretion.
Well, if another citizen is scheduled to speak, but if they're not scheduled to speak, I'm not going to allow the playing of the video now. But what Commissioner Overman asked is if another citizen from there is going to speak or if they'd like to tell you what the website is, I could do that at this point. I mean, you know, I'll let others know. But we're going to move through the list, and if they have anyone else that's speaking... and if they have anyone else that's speaking at this time since we just received it. And it's, it has to be under the three minutes.
Madam, Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I, I believe we also have a board policy related to the sharing of videos. The board could certainly waive that policy if it wishes, but I'm, I'm not so sure that it can be shared per that policy.
Okay.
Because we require some lead time. Presumably, that policy was implemented probably so that we could monitor for obscenities and things like that, but
It's a good point.
I just wanted to remind the board of that policy.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Also, maybe just even for technical issues like this. But we'll move now to, um, Dennis Carlton.
Mr. Carlton, you're recognized. Mr. Dennis Carlton?
Excuse me, I think he was the last speaker, Mr. Carlton.
No, we had Mr. Carlton Jr. and Dennis Carlton himself, uh, or, or both, both Carlton names, and we had two different speakers last time, so. Uh, but I, hearing none, we'll just move on unless we, we get contacted otherwise. Gary Ritter? Gary Ritter?
I believe Mr. Ritter is not on the line with us.
Okay, many of these people commented the first time and so maybe they didn't stay for the second. Uh, Reed Fishback?
Uh, good eve, good evening. I, uh, was saving my wetland comments, uh, for the Wai'ama Village Plan. You know, when, when private owners buy property, they pay for wetlands. When the county buys property, they pay for wetlands. Uh, the wetlands do have a val, a value and, and, you know, it's not right to take away that value that has already been vested by the property owners. Uh, they've had the wetland credit, density credit as long as I have known. You have thousands of property owners in East, East Hillsborough County that will be affected if the board removes the Wetland Density Credit in the rural area. This is not just a few large ag owners. It is thousands of owners in East Hillsborough County. The rural area has such low densities, I, I don't believe this should be a priority of the Commission. You know, we can talk about a lot of community issues, um, going forward, but the Wetland Density Credit does not need to be one of those items. You know, I ask the board to direct staff to no longer consider the elimination of the Wetland Density Credit as part of this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Nora Santos?
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Yes, good evening, all. Okay, yes, th, thank you. Good evening, all. Uh, my name is Nora Santos. Uh, I've been living in Wai'ama since the age of four. Uh, to li, to live here is to understand the value of what it means to be part of, uh, a community. Uh, the people of Wai'ama have formed bonds with each other to the point that I think that we, that, that they consider others extended, extended family. Um, fa, families have lived here for many, ma, ma, many, uh, years and genera, generations. Luckily, some have inherited family homes. But, um, as Wai'ama continues to grow, the lack of affordable housing is pushing out some of the families that have not been here for years, that have been here for, 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 for years, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Um, having access to affordable housing is extremely beneficial, not only to low-income families, but, um, to, to young, single adults, uh, who wish to become homeowners. Instead of renting out at ex, I mean, high prices on, 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 on rent, uh, they ho, uh, they can become homeowners if we have, if there would be affordable housing here. Uh, a perfect example I can give you, my daughter, uh, she is currently going through the, through, to the self-help with, uh, Florida Home Partnership. Uh, she's a single female millennial who is very fortunate to, to be a young homeowner. And best of all, she'll have a mortgage that she'll be able to, to, to afford. Uh, I ask you please to, to, to have affordable housing uh, so we can, um, have more families, um, uh, own a home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joe Sumner?
Uh, Madam Chair, I believe that Joe Sumner, Jay Sizemore, and Bianca Gonzalez are not on the line with us.
Thank you.
Those are the next three speakers.
Melissa Nguyen? Melissa Nguyen?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm here to speak tonight on behalf of the Florida Home Partnership. Um, though I may not know as much as some others about, um, many of the details and, uh, uh, amendments and different things being discussed tonight, I do know that my family has recently closed on a home through the Florida Home Partnership. Um, what I, what I do know is that I spent myself, um, as a full-time, um, third-generation Floridian from the South County area, months, um, if not over a year, trying to research, um, some way that we could obtain housing for our family. Um, though we are hard workers and have decent credit, there's nothing available in the market. There are programs in Tampa that offer assistance for affordable housing, but there's nothing available for those programs. There, this is almost like a last, last-ditch effort for the county in whole to provide opportunities to people that truly do deserve them. Um, so if, if this is the only land available for them, I, I really think that it would be in the best interest of everyone to allow that to continue, um, because hard-working people like this are, are good for the community, no matter which community it is. And with the county in whole having limited resources and not having, um, any opportunities for families that are, that weren't given generational wealth or that have been forced to pay the outrageous prices to renting and haven't been able to save large, um, sums of money or, or haven't come into some other kind of lucky break that others might have, have gained. Um, programs like this are very helpful. If it wasn't for the program, um, I, I'm not sure what our future would have entailed. We definitely wouldn't have been able to purchase a home at all, even though our income was substantial, um, not substantial, but, um, medium, I would say, medium income, good enough to get approved of the loan, but not good enough to get actual, um, properties that we could afford anywhere in the county. Um, so I fully support the agency, they're doing great things, and, uh, that's all I have to say for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Kurt Williams?
Uh, Kurt Williams, uh, did not call in.
Okay, um, I missed a name again. Yar, Yaritza Acevito?
Um, I do not believe she's on the call right now.
Okay, Jimmy Selvi?
Uh, Jimmy has left the meeting as well.
Okay, Madison Aston?
I do not see Ms. Aston on the line. Uh, I believe our next caller after that would be Kenneth Parker.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, please accept my earlier comments and to the record. And, and while I'm thankful for Commissioner White's motion, uh, and the unanimous, unanimous support from the board to, to simply kick the can down the road, I'm asking that you, uh, I'm asking that you take action and remove the proposed removal of the Wetland Density Credit issue tonight. There is an obvious disconnect between policymakers and the agricultural community. Uh, y'all, y'all have heard from the ag community in very short and concise segments tonight. They know how severely this negatively impacts their ability to remain viable. Uh, again, I'm going to ask the board to direct staff to eliminate the removal of the Wetland Density Credit tonight. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Richie Longenecker?
Madam Chair, Richie, uh, Longenecker and John, uh, Prevert never joined the call.
Okay. And
And I do not have, uh, Jason Conrad as well.
Okay, and do we have, um, Brian Shoup, Michael Marina?
Oh, Brian is not on the call, but we do have Michael.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Marina?
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, my name's Mike Marina, I'm Executive Director of Florida Home Partnership. I've been with FHP for about six years. Um, I'm, I've been scrambling a little bit because what I didn't expect was what has happened, which is, um, an extension of nearly a year of the moratorium. Uh, my ears are ringing a little bit, I'm confused because I'm not sure where this leaves FHP, but more importantly, I'm not sure where this leaves the hundreds of folks that are looking for affordable housing. Um, I know that Commission is, is very interested in support, affordable housing. Um, but that couple of numbers that I, I just want to point out. In the last, in the last 14 months, we've had 2,000 inquiries about the various programs we have. Uh, 85% of the folks we serve are minority, 28% African-American. 70% of everybody that we work with is already living in South County. There is an emergency with affordable housing. We're not the answer, the total answer, but we provide hope and opportunity for folks to help change their lives. And we just, we need to, to, to do something because I'm just not sure how we're going to address this. It leaves Florida Home Partnership with sort of a short-term problem, but the long-term is what I'm really worried about for the, the folks that need this. And I respectfully ask the Commission, uh, if you're going to, you are going to extend the moratorium, but please direct the staff, because I know you care about affordable housing. Please direct them, when they come back and do this, to make some provision to try to provide incentives for affordable housing in, in the plan that's eventually adopted because I understand this is a complicated issue with a lot of factors, but these folks need it. And I just hope that you'll direct the staff to provide some sort of incentives, uh, because without that, I'm just not sure what's going to happen to the hundreds of people that want to come to Wai'ama
Your time is up, Mr. Marina? Your time is up? Your time is up?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Jake Kramer?
Good evening, Chair and Commission. Uh, this is Jake Kramer, 401 East Jackson Street. Um, I'd also like to ask that my comments from earlier on the wetlands be incorporated into this hearing. Uh, I'm going to focus my comments on, on this hearing on affordable housing. You know, again, looking back at Monday night, I think this is getting lost. On Monday night, your planning commission took the unprecedented step of finding unanimously that everything you're considering right now is inconsistent with your own comprehensive plan. For WVR2, in addition to the wetlands issue, the planning commission specifically found that the package did not adequately support affordable housing. Just as with the wetlands issue, this is an issue where staff initially recommended something and this board simply threw out the recommendation without further consideration. As you've heard tonight, not everyone who needs an affordable home wants to or has the ability to move into the urban service area. And I don't think it's fair for us to ask them to. I ask that for WVR2, that you explicitly direct staff to add back in the proposal that was developed before. Your professional experts and consultants, uh, to allow affordable housing in WVR2 up to three units per acre. I also ask that you remove the unworkable AMI requirements that were added at the last minute and that are, the industry will tell you are completely unworkable. We can work with you on, uh, we're open to working with you, Commissioners, on, uh, a requirement to make sure very low-income folks have some of that affordable housing, but 60% uh, is, is economically unfeasible. Uh, I also think that a moratorium until December is far too long as, as, as Mr. Marina just explained. Um, this is a desperate need and pushing this out 10, 10 more months is, is just not going to work. I know there's been a lot of angst tonight about getting enough public input. Uh, with respect, the issue is, is not of getting more public input. The, the issue is of listening. Again, it, we're not talking about needing more input tonight. Really, what we're asking you to do is listen to what the community has come before you. I have not seen a crowd this big come to the, come before the BOCC during the time of COVID. Uh, they're here now and we're asking that you, that you listen. We're asking that you listen to all of us, the development community. You've been asking us for a couple of years now to work with you, to work with the public. And, and we've done that, Commissioners, we've done that for two years. We've done it for two years. Your, your, your comprehensive plan says that you have a responsibility for, to all, quote, all Hillsborough County residents, uh, to give them the opportunity to purchase or rent standard housing. So Commissioners, you have a choice tonight.
Mr. Kramer, your time is up. Mr. Kramer, your time is up.
Please give staff direction tonight on affordable housing.
Mr. Kramer, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Albert? Isabel Albert?
Ms. Albert? Yes? Are you on? I'm here. Okay. Good evening. My name is Isabel Albert from the half-assed associate at 1,000 North Ashley Drive, Suite 900. And I'm a certified planner who's been practicing in the Tampa Bay area for the last 20 years, 10 of which were right here within the Development Services Department with the zoning team. For the last three years, though, I've been doing most of my work, uh, rezoning in the Wai'ama area, which is not surprising because Wai'ama really is the last frontier for single-family home development in Hillsborough County. This is especially important for the Florida Home Partnership, which you have learned tonight, they utilize the USDA Rural Self-Help Program. Again, this is a program for providing affordable housing in the rural area only. And Wai'ama is important because it's the only remaining rural area with newer, newer infrastructures that is and will be provided by development, which is critical for supporting Florida Home Partnership's affordable housing mission. Wai'ama has always been planned for development and the last remaining good land for development should not be overlooked for providing good planning while providing affordable housing. It is without doubt that the remaining area will be developed and we must act now to protect the possibilities to provide much-needed affordable housing. If not, that opportunity is gone. Regulating affordable housing to be located in the downtown Wai'ama is not realistic. In fact, there's already policies that permit density bonus programs for downtown Wai'ama, yet they've never been utilized to date. The reason is perhaps because available lots are small or scattered or what we heard previously is the current sewer system is just too old, pressure's too low, which cannot support larger development or apartments. Although the comprehensive plan housing element provides affordable housing in the urban area, the comprehensive plan does not prohibit these incentives to be in the rural area. Interestingly enough, development regulations for the Wai'ama area encourages des or cluster development in an urban form, yet there are no affordable housing incentives. Unfortunately, land adjacent to the WVR2 eligible for affordable housing density bonus is either already developed or subdivided into small parcels or already master-planned. Part of the efforts that I've been doing for researching the impacts of providing affordable housing in WVR2 calculated approximately 725 potential affordable lots to be available in the next 10 years, 10 to 15 years. So with tonight's proposal, these will be gone along with the Florida Home Partnership mission to provide the much-needed affordable housing. My professional opinion- In my professional opinion, using existing affordable housing policy in the downtown Wyomama will certainly not lead to the creating of affordable housing. It has not in the past, and it certainly will not in the future. I ask that you bring back the affordable housing density bonus. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Nicole Nugbauer? Is Nicole Nugbauer there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. You're recognized.
Yes. Commissioner, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Nicole Nugbauer, and I'm a Land use attorney at Sterns Weaver Miller. I've been involved in efforts to incentivize single-family affordable housing in Wyomama for the last two years. I'd like to briefly address Commissioner White's continuance. The only way I would support a short continuance is if affordable housing incentives are included. I ask that Commissioner White amend his motion to specifically direct staff to add the affordable housing bonus back in. According to the county's own WTLA community character profile, there are approximately 2,135 households in Wyomama. The median income of these households is just under $37,000 a year. By bringing back the affordable housing density bonus of just one dwelling unit per acre, households earning roughly $33,000 per year or more could afford a brand-new, net-zero energy home at $800 per month with FHP. This equates to over 1,100, or 52% of current Wyomama residents who would be able to afford one of these Florida Home Partnership homes. The vast majority, about 70%, of Florida Home Partnership's clients already live in South County. The largest zip codes that serve this program are in Ruskin and Wyomama. This simply shows that everyone who wants an affordable home cannot be expected to live within the urban service area. We cannot let our preconceived notions of how affordable housing is supposed to work get in the way of a proposal that will actually produce affordable homes. As discussed by Mr. Marina, Wyomama has a significant minority population. Approximately 85% of Florida Home Partnership's clients are also minorities. The current development standards required by WVR2 will only ensure racial and income inequities because affordable housing is not affirmatively furthered or supported. Consequently, the only way that the county can address this inequity is by providing an incentive that is attractive for affordable housing. The great thing about the previously proposed density bonus is that it allows a policy mechanism that market-rate developers and affordable housing providers have an incentive to work together to create integrated communities. It does not make sense to reject a density bonus just because WVR2 is outside the urban service area, when that policy will only reinforce racial and income inequality. I ask that you bring back the affordable housing density bonus, which was removed in the most recent draft of the amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Elise Batzel?
Yes, Elise Batzel, 401 East Jackson Street. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to step back a little bit at a 30,000-square-foot level. When Melissa introduced this item, she said that the focus of the planning commission's inconsistency was the wetland density credit and lack of public participation. That isn't what we heard. What we heard was the wetland density credit and affordable housing. And that affordable housing component is something that is critical to this community. When Mr. Collins was giving his presentation at the planning commission, he said that this plan reflects every integral part of the community, but the problem is it doesn't. It leaves out the affordable housing density bonus and that huge part of the community that really needs our support. If you ignore that integral part of the WVR2 community and you set aside the recommendations that Ms. Saven had, what do you have left? You don't have a community plan. You have a plan that the Board of County Commissioners has come in and cherry-picked to be a plan that doesn't represent the community, and I think that's why you have so many people speaking here tonight. We came up with a plan as a community, Wyomama Now, so many different organizations, months and months and months of community meetings. Jay Collins said 90 meetings, and I believe that's correct. Despite pandemic, there was a lot of public outreach. And there was a plan that was presented before the Board of County Commissioners, and you all did two things. You said, you know what? We don't want that affordable housing component, and we think we're going to get rid of the way that we calculate gross density for wetlands. But you all did that unilaterally. You did that without the public. You did that without the community input, and this is supposed to be a community plan. And so I would put this back on to the Board of County Commissioners to look at what is the purpose of this community plan. It's listening to all of us. I heard today that two board members wanted to transmit this without listening to anyone from the community, despite the fact that over 100 people were signed up tonight. And I am sorry that that is not acceptable to the community. This community expects the board to listen to them, and you, all of you, represent all of us. And so I would encourage you to take a step back and think about listening to the community a little bit more. Thank you for your time.
Jessica Eisterman?
Good evening. My name is Jessica Eisterman. I'm also a land use attorney at Sterns Weaver Miller. I have been involved in the Wyomama update process for the last year-plus. The only way I would support a short continuance is if the many affordable housing concerns you've heard tonight are addressed. I request an amended or substitute motion to specifically direct staff to include the affordable housing density bonus. Again, on Monday night, the planning commission took an unprecedented step and found unanimously that the package did not adequately support affordable housing. I'd also like to point out that you've heard some of your few speakers from the RP2 item whose comments were directed to the WVR2 item. Please don't forget those pleas for affordable housing, too. Affordable housing is a major issue in Hillsborough County, representing the prevailing housing need of many segments of the population. The comprehensive plan must address and satisfy those needs for the residents of unincorporated Hillsborough County. This isn't just my opinion. This is written in your housing element of the comprehensive plan. Although affordable housing can be constructed in WVR2, the reality is that it won't be incorporated into any development without a meaningful incentive. Affordable housing is supposedly incentivized in the downtown Wyomama area, but here's another reality check. The downtown Wyomama area already employs affordable housing incentives. These incentives have never been used. For example, to utilize the project design plan density bonus in the downtown area, mass transit has to be available within a reasonable distance of the site. This does not exist in downtown Wyomama. Also, sewer and other public facilities and infrastructure must be in place. We know that the sewer in downtown Wyomama is a low-pressure system with small pipe sizes, and the system is too weak to support any type of substantial development. We cannot let perfect stand in the way of progress. Please include the affordable housing density bonus from the last draft into the final language. And with that, I respectfully request an amended or substitute motion to specifically direct staff to include the affordable housing density bonus. Thank you.
Thank you. June Ferguson?
Ms. Ferguson did not call off tonight.
Thank you. Pamela Gomez?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I would just have my previous comments be added to this section as well. And I would like to reiterate that this is definitely, that we support affordable housing, unobtainable housing for the residents of Wyomama with data-driven results. Thank you.
Thank you. Wanda Brogdon?
Yes, thank you, Chair and Commissioner. Again, I come back, just to make a couple of comments. My first time around, I forgot to thank Tassiana and Jay, who I feel like bent over backwards to work on this plan. I can't imagine like the hours they spent on this. They returned our calls, they returned our emails, they held meetings, they met with the community, they placed signs, they did flyers. I feel like they did all they could do. There's really nothing that I can see that they really could have done to increase participation. So there were some people who didn't participate because they felt like their voices actually were drowned out. And sometime around December 2019, a large-scale email went out to all of South Hillsborough County saying that anybody who was fed up with traffic and congestion and overdevelopment needed to get on board and have their voices heard in respect to the BOM and Wyomama Community Plan upgrade. Well, that drowned out a lot of the actual citizens who lived within the community plan boundary itself. So I just wanted to remind you that the 33598 geography actually contains five community plan areas: BOM, Wyomama, Greater Sun City Center, Little Manatee South, and Apollon Beach. So just because you say that you live in Wyomama, that you have a Wyomama address, it doesn't mean that you live within the boundaries of this map. And it doesn't mean that, you know, those are the people that are going to be affected, the ones who physically live in these newly designated neighborhood districts. So whatever your plans for those neighborhood districts are going to be, those are the people that you need to talk to about what they want and don't want in their community. So I did hear Mr. Collins say that this was the first time ever that a community plan was updated, so that kind of answers one of those questions. But it seems to me like this was never before, to my knowledge, has the public at large been invited to express what their demands were and impose their wishes on a neighboring community plan. So I just want to reiterate that the people that live inside this boundary map are the ones that are going to be living with the changes that we make. Thank you.
Thank you. Bryce Bowden?
Bryce Bowden is not on the call anymore, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ron Weaver?
Madam Chairman, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Madam Chairman? Thank you, Madam Chairman. If this were the Kansas City Chiefs on Sunday night, I'm afraid the ref would have to call offsides, the way Mike Peterson alluded to a while ago, and for seven reasons that you've turned this moratorium into an illegal one, for seven reasons. Number one, a moratorium can only be justified if you serve the health, and you're unserving the health of the agricultural community, feeding its families, not having its loans called. You're discriminating against the health of affordable housing for at least eight or 15 reasons just discussed, including the half of those 2,100 homes who need this affordable housing by the test that Mrs. Nogahauer just put of record. The second illegality of this moratorium for the last 20 or 40 days of its switcheroo is the lack of the good faith required for the moratorium to have been legal in the first place or to have sustained its legality, which it lost about 20 to 40 days ago. It must not be discriminatory, and you're discriminating against the agricultural community, the newcomer, the existing landowner, the folks with wetlands on their property who've relied on the density credits for the last 30 years, as you've heard about for four of the last five hours. It's illegal for a sixth reason, which is it has to be based on facts, facts which you've ignored for the last 20 or 40 days by taking your planning commission staff's first 460 of the 480 days of moratorium and turning them upside down and starting them all over. To turn a 540-day moratorium into an 810-day moratorium is not only illegal, it is unconscionable because the most important part of a legal moratorium, according to the dozen city and county attorneys with whom I deal every day, is, and I quote them, by the way, these are city and county attorneys who have set of record about illegal moratorium. You must be, for a legal moratorium, solving the problem that caused the need for the moratorium in the most expeditious way. To start all over after 460 of the 480 days, when you took away the three-unit density bonus, which needs to be restored immediately, with it's not a 60% AMI, but a more reasonable AMI, you need to take away that wetland density bonus goodbye and restore or leave the wetland density bonus. You need to move, please, for reconsideration. With all due respect to Mr. White, and I love you, Commissioner White, but with all due respect, one of you, by your own rule four, can move to reconsider the previous motion of another nine-month delay of what has already become an illegal moratorium for at least 20 of the last 40 days. If this were Kansas City Chiefs on Sunday night, it would either be offsides, or quite frankly, I suspect that that new female first ref in a Super Bowl, who is a female, should get it right, and it's targeting, it's targeting defenseless agricultural landowner, folks with existing properties, and especially the urgent needs of the affordable housing community when the moratorium went bad about 40 days ago. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Teresa Mattes Post? I'm sorry, Teresita Mattes Post?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is, okay, great, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. My name is Teresita Matos Post, and I am, I've been part of the Wyomama community for a little bit, over a year, and I serve as the Executive Director at Betel Farm Worker Ministry. And our organization has been a staple in the Wyomama community as a resource center and a worship center since 1983. We represent over 500 very hard-working families in the Wyomama area, for whom this pandemic has been especially paralyzing. I was ready to talk in support of extending the moratorium, so I just want to say thank you for taking the bold step, for allowing space and time to invite everyone at the table. Community engagement in the Wyomama plan is important to us because it is important to the families that we serve, that have been living in this area for decades, who love their community and long, just like the rest of us, to be part of a thriving community where their children can grow roots and thrive. I know from the stories of the families we serve that we, and have lived in Wyomama for two and even three generations now, that they want an opportunity to weigh in on this plan. But the stories that we hear during this last 10 to 12 months with high, record-high job losses, COVID-19 infections, evictions, and other strenuous circumstances, including the limited access to the Internet, they have not had the proper opportunity, and to be honest, the mindset to engage in this exciting and promising and long-awaited process for this plan. We owe it to our Wyomama residents, to our current Wyomama residents, to be part of this process. As a faith-based agency who focus, especially working with farmworking families, let me just say on the record, farmworkers are essential workers, and we can't stress enough how important affordable housing it is to them and has been for decades, but how even more important it is for them to have a voice in this plan. So you have made the right choice tonight to allow proper time, to invite all at the table, and all Wyomama stakeholders to weigh in, and I commend you on your mindful approach and thoughtful development and responsible development. That's commendable, and I congratulate you. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you. Rosemary Zamora?
Hi, yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Rosemary Zamora. I was born and raised what is now known as Hillsborough County South Shore region. I strongly and desperately agree that we need affordable housing programs to remain in South Shore, especially in the Wyomama community area. Having lived in the Wyomama area for almost 21 years has been very notable that it's needed affordable housing to remain for hundreds of residents there. Growing up in Wyomama, we didn't have much to offer 21 years ago but a recreational center and one elementary school with a soccer field across the street from it. This community, most of my childhood, my parents had us living in rental trailers. Now, I am proud to say, as a newly dreamed, come true homeowner, due to the affordable program, Florida Home Partnership has to offer families such as myself. I tried to go conventional, but never could make the income or afford the monthly payment that conventional builders are charging. I did this for my son as a single mom. My sweat and determination finally made my dream come true with every sweat I poured into it. This is to give my son the same vision that affordable homeownership is possible. I thank God for this blessing. My heart sank when they told me I qualified. I ran home and hugged my son and told him how proud I was. I was a pro. I'm still in amazement. I love my home. I love this program. And I plead with you to take my story and keep affordable housing in Hillsborough County. Give us that to make this dream come true to many others. That's who we need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Edgar Martinez?
Mr. Martinez is no longer on the line.
Thank you. Christina Bosworth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Christina Bosworth, and I am a resident of Wyomama and an officer of the Board of Directors of the Wyomama CDC. What I want to say applies to the livable communities element, future land use, and land development code. Wyomama is a historic town that needs to be preserved and improved so all residents can have a good life. So I support the January 2021 draft plan that eliminates the wetland density bonus for planned development and replaces the jobs requirement with community benefits, with a few changes. Change the table of community benefit requirements so all the community benefits reflect true benefits to the Wyomama community, particularly the needs of the downtown area. Many of the so-called community benefits in this plan, particularly Members Eight and Nine, benefit the new plan development, not the Wyomama community. Eliminating the jobs requirement and requiring the developer to simply add additional green space in the new PD does not serve this community's needs. We need transportation, infrastructure, workforce development, economic development, and other basic items such as sidewalks, streetlights, libraries, health clinics, and more. More than 35% of Wyomama residents do not even have Internet access, which means they have been unable to fully participate in this process due to COVID restrictions. I am asking that you please support the recommended changes to this plan that were provided by Enterprise and Latinas and the Wyomama CDC, and allow us more time to work with Planning Commission staff and WTLNA to ensure we have a plan that reflects the true needs and wants of Wyomama residents. Even though Planning Commission staff has done an excellent job trying to involve the community residents, the global pandemic has adversely affected participation significantly. Due to that, I ask the Board of County Commissioners to extend the moratorium so that we can accomplish what we set out to do. Have a plan that benefits the Wyomama community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Pastor Carlos Rosari?
Madam Chair, Pastor Carlos left a message. He had to drop off the call due to an emergency with a member of his congregation who was under hospice care. He just mentioned that he planned to speak in favor of affordable, single-family homes in Wyomama.
Thank you. Holly Jamison?
Both Holly Jamison and Wendy Heath. Wendy Heath was on the call earlier, but she had to drop off as well, and Holly Jamison is not here.
Okay. Noel Lacor?
Good evening. So I would just like for my comments from the RP2 hearing to be incorporated into the WVR2 hearing, into this hearing. And then I also just like to say that, you know, we're not asking to start over. We're asking for an extension to get it right, since we only really have one chance at getting it right. And also, it's not just the people that live within the boundaries that are affected. Entire South Hillsborough County area is affected, and really beyond that as well. And then I'd also like to say something about, you know, Florida Home Partnership, because I don't think that people understand that they can still build in Wyomama, and it's not limited to the downtown area. They also still have over 125 homes, lots that are available in Ruskin and Bayou Pass Village. And as an earlier caller had said, you know, why you guys out to look at Florida Home Partnership properties, I would like to, as a Vice President of one of their properties, Bayou Pass Village, I'd like to invite each and every one of you to come tour all six pages with me, and that way I can show you why Florida Home Partnership should not be allowed to create any more HOAs. Houses, yes. HOAs, no. Also, about the USDA. So Florida Home Partnership has foreclosed on homeowners' homes for leans, one lien as low as $1,407. Let me tell you what happens when that happens. When Florida Home Partnership does that, the homeowners no longer pay their mortgage. So like the one that was $1,407, that homeowner was current with her mortgage, so now she's not paying it any longer. The certificate of title's sold. Now USDA is not getting their money, and they won't get their money until they foreclose. Well, their foreclosure is about 10 years backlog right now and has been for about, since about 2009. So, you know, that is going to negatively affect USDA wanting to give loans when the developer is foreclosing on the homes and then they're not able to get their money. And that is it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Vivian Handy?
Hi, I would also like my comments from the RP2 to be entered into the WVR2 hearing notes as well, please. And I would actually like to thank the Commissioners, because you did listen to the community and you did listen to the reason behind the entire moratorium, which was not only the congestion and the transportation issue, but the whole issue with making sure we have jobs to support development. That has not gone away. I'd like to reiterate my support for the wetland density credit, which we did try to pass in the original Wyomama community plan, but we, the residents, were overwhelmed by the development interest, which, by the way, it's how kind of them, all of those downtown lawyers, to be so concerned about what happens to us out here in Wyomama. I am a business owner in Wyomama. I am an employer in Wyomama, and I can tell you that any density bumps are not wanted and not needed. I'm particularly concerned about the so-called affordable housing density bump. The Strong Towns Journal has a recent article about what makes, the four things that makes affordable housing not affordable. Number one is transportation. Number two is access to jobs. Number three, access to childcare. And number four, access to community connection. None of those things are well-served, if served at all, outside of the urban service area, where there is not access to any of these things and will only contribute to the sprawl, the congestion, the pavement, the impact. Thank you to the Commissioner who noted that two-plus units per acre is not actually rural. And I am chilled to the bone by whoever it was that said that this is the last frontier for development out here in Wyomama. Where are the property rights and where are the concerns for my neighbors and my rural residents who actually purchased acreage with wetlands on them with no intention whatsoever of cramming houses into them on all the remaining upland? So please continue representing the people that actually live out here in the rural area and for, and continue to represent our concerns for our rural lifestyles and for the wildlife, the habitat, and the wetlands that depend on what's left here in Hillsborough County, because we've actually done a very poor job of protecting what remains. Thank you.
Thank you. Ida Garcia?
Ida Garcia is not on the call.
Thank you. How about Samantha Solis?
Samantha is no longer on the call as well. I don't have Victor Tovar as well. I believe the next person in the list would be Elizabeth Ramirez.
Elizabeth Ramirez, you're recognized.
My name is Elizabeth. I just wanted to share that as a single mother of one and a single, a single-income home, it is a great feeling to be able to say that in a few months I will be receiving the keys to my very first home, and this is all thanks to the Florida Home Partnership program. And if it wasn't for the program, I would not be able to afford a home for my daughter. It is a great feeling. My future neighbors, getting to know them, and being able to help them provide for their families as well. Please put the Affordable Single Family Density Bonus back into plan for those families who work hard and want to put, want to help build their own home like I have. It is important for you to support the future of the program, where Florida Home Partnership may be able to provide the same opportunities for homeownership for others. So please, please put it back. It is very important, and it has helped a lot of people. I'm always being asked how I'm doing it, where they can go to get information. So as our elected officials, it is my hope that you will listen to the voices of the people. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Michael Fabro?
Michael is no longer on the call.
Okay. Liz Gutierrez?
Commissioners, I would just request that we put my comments from the RP2 into WVR2 record, and thank you for considering the extension of the moratorium so that we can work out all of these challenging issues.
Thank you. Miguel Medina?
I do not see Miguel on the call as well. The only person that we think we have left is Augie Grace.
Okay, so our last speaker. Mr. Grace?
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Augie Grace. I live in Wyomama. In light of Commissioner White's motion, I hope that if a similar motion is made on this item, that it would include language directing the staff to include the Affordable Home Density Bonus in the comprehensive plan. I'm speaking this evening to urge the Commissioners to include this proposed language in the comprehensive plan. I'm so impressed with the testimony that I've heard early in the evening where people of six generations were testifying. I myself, I'm a newcomer to the county. I moved to Wyomama from Massachusetts, where I served two terms in the House of Representatives, and where I chaired a special legislative commission on affordable housing. In Massachusetts, I saw many communities that set aside parcels of land with the noble intention of creating affordable housing, but in most cases, those parcels of land remain vacant and undeveloped until the community created incentives for developers like the single-family home density bonus. Of course, affordable housing can reside anywhere residential development is allowed, but many of these communities found that for developers, it was not economically feasible to build the housing without incentives. This past fall, I walked the streets of Wyomama. I talked to residents, and I saw the conditions that people are presently living in. It cannot be denied that there exists an urgent need for affordable housing, and there have been plenty of previous speakers this evening who have spoken about the need for affordable housing in our community. I think every creative tool should be considered to help facilitate affordable housing production in Wyomama. I would urge the Commission to include the single-family home density bonus to increase the availability of affordable, single-family homes, and to increase a, and to create a blend of market rate and affordable, single-family homes in, in our community that fits the rural neighborhoods of Wyomama. I hope that my comments would be used for both of the livable community elements and the future land use elements. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you. And with that, we are going to close the public hearing, and I know Commissioner White asked to be recognized first. Commissioner White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And before I get to my motion, I have some questions for staff about this issue of eliminating the wetlands density bonus. I know that Commissioner Kemp brought forth an initiative to eliminate the wetland density credit in, in the rural areas. I'm just wondering, is, is the elimination of the wetland density credit proposal in these RP2 and WVR2 draft amendments related to that in any way, or how do, how do those interact?
Yes, sir. After the Board's motion in December at your regular meeting, where you directed us to work, to remove them from the rural area, we looked at these two studies that are impacting areas of the rural area and felt that it was appropriate to incorporate that, because we certainly wouldn't want somebody to exit this process thinking they had a certain expectation, and then us come along just two or three months later through a different plan amendment and, and make a change. So we wanted to be transparent about that by including it in these amendments, based on your, your all's direction.
Okay, but, but that was just in the abundance of caution to be transparent. So if, if Commissioner Kemp's initiative is eventually implemented into the comp plan, I mean, that, that would apply here whether it's a part of these specific amendments or not, right?
That, yes.
Commissioner Kemp, if I may, I'd like to make my motion regarding WVR2, and then I'd like to be recognized again for a second motion?
Sure.
Okay. So, so first, I move that we not transmit HCCPA 20-12 and HCCPA 20-13, and at the Board, direct the County Attorney's Office to draft an ordinance extending the moratorium enacted pursuant to ordinance 20-12 to December 31, 2021, and schedule public hearings for March 3 at 9:00 a.m. and April 7 at 9:00 a.m. to consider adoption of the ordinance. The purpose of the extended moratorium is to allow time for staff to obtain additional stakeholder input on the proposed comprehensive plan and land development code amendments in recognition of the challenges experienced by some stakeholders in providing input during the COVID pandemic. I further move that HCCPA 20-12, HCCPA 20-13, and LDC 21-0289 be continued to a future cycle that aligns with the extended moratorium.
Second. Commissioner Smith has seconded Commissioner White's motion, and Commissioner White, did you want to speak to that, any of that now, or should we have the discussion? You said you wanted to make a second motion?
Yes, ma'am, but I, it's probably appropriate to dispose of this one.
Right, exactly. That's why I was kind of trying to figure out what you were, okay. So we have the motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Smith. And is there, I see Commissioner Overman, has your hand, you have your hand raised?
Right, yeah, I had it up electronically, but I wasn't sure because it had been up for a little bit. Thank you, Commissioner White, for bringing that up and for the second, and I appreciate. I think the extended time is necessary. The difference between the RP2 and the WVR2 is I think the WVR2 is a little closer if we can continue to address the concerns of the agricultural community when it comes to the density, I mean, the, the wetland credit, and we can also address the issue as far as the affordable housing. There is clearly a need for affordable housing. And because of the USDA Affordable Housing Language, the affordable housing that's been done in that area by the Florida Home Partnership has been effective. I know that Commissioner Kemp and Commissioner Smith and I had all toured the net-zero, single-family homes last year that was celebrated, that actually allows those homes, not only even though they're a single family, are very affordable as a consequence of having, not having a utility bill associated with it because of the insulation and the various different technologies they utilize. Now, that does help exacerbate some of the issues associated with the fact that there's no transit in the area. So I think there's some work that can be done, that can get this done maybe quicker than December, because I believe that this, the conversations that have been facilitated by many of the groups in the area have been maybe just a tad more attended than they may have been possibly in the more rural areas of parts of Balm and, and the east part of, of the Wyomama area. So I, I am, I am supportive of the motion to extend, but I would like to help everyone to make, to realize that we may be able to separate the two extensions and have one move before the other if we're able to, you know, to figure out a way to communicate. able to, you know, to figure out a way to communicate with the communities in the Wyomama area. Um, I did hear earlier in the comments some concerns or the statement that it's not affordable to build in the restricted AMI recommendations and I find that, um, not to be true. It is possible and that's how we have to find ways to make this happen. We want to make sure that if we're creating a dis, a additional housing capacity for the people that live in that community, that they are not pushed out because the home prices are at, in an excessive level that doesn't allow them to stay in their community, which is already happening in this area and we want to preserve the community as this area continues to create additional housing that's needed in the area. One of the other issues that we've seen in the past has been the nexus between, you know, the jobs component of the community plan and where the houses are. And I think part of the conversations that have been occurring in the planning so far have tried to address that issue while keeping the jobs component somewhat in place. But the community benefits list needs to be, um, clear, concise, and required. So if we're giving up any of the elements associated with, um, either increased density or, uh, lack of certain tools or community benefits, it needs to be clear. It, they must occur and it, and they must occur with a certain amount of certainty so that there is a real true economic factor or economic formula that allows for that density bonus to work if, if we keep a wetlands credit to work and to make sure that a TDR program is based on economic principles and lending principles that actually work as well. So with that, I'll support the motion and, um, be interested in hearing what the next one is.
Are there any other comments tonight by any other commissioners? Commissioner Smith, you're recognized?
Yes, I, and, uh, I'm just, uh, want to make sure that we're providing some direction as we, as we extra, as for extra time. We're not just kicking the can down the road. We are asking for, uh, community input and, and also, um, uh, giving our planners some dir, some direction and, and a little response to some of the comments we've heard tonight. And I certainly appreciate all the community, uh, comment, uh, people, public input from people who've written in, people who've, uh, participated in these meetings and people who spoke tonight. Um, when people ask us to increase density in the rural area, they have to recognize they're asking us to spend taxpayer dollars providing urban services outside the urban services area. And they're asking us to consider the impacts of that increased density, uh, moving farther and farther out, um, on, on our infrastructure and our communities inside the urban service area if we create nothing but commuter subdivisions of people adding traffic to the roads between there and Tampa every, every day. We are currently unable to afford the infrastructure we need inside the urban services area. So, um, this is, you know, it's not just a matter of listening. It's a matter of our responsibility to figure out what we can, um, provide, what we can afford to provide that this, that the people are asking for and how best to, um, to accomplish, uh, some kind of compromise, uh, within what everybody, all the wants and needs that are being presented, it, within our budget, um, and, and, and how it impacts, uh, the whole county. So, we have a market study that says our county has already approved more development than we can fill up with projected growth in these areas, RP2 and WVR2, in the next 20 years or so. You know, so, so it's not just a matter of who wants what. It's a, it's a matter of considering the feasibility and the cost of what we can provide. And then our planners need to plan for infrastructure and jobs to grow together with residential development. So, and our planners need to plan for affordable housing that works with jobs and transit. So it is affordable to the residents of Wyomama and not simply luring, uh, people from Tampa out to some rural area where they will then have to commute back into Tampa every day to their jobs and services, adding traffic to the streets that we can't afford to widen. So, um, I just want to encourage the citizens and planners to take a look at the big picture and delve into the details like the lot sizes proposed in the Land Development Code. I think the Wyomama community has different ideas of compatibility than the Balm community. So their ideas about what lot sizes fit the character of each area are, are probably going to be different, but everybody needs to take this time to, uh, really delve into the details and discuss them. And I hope we have some, uh, uh, more workshops where we can all discuss these, um, issues one at a time, uh, from affordable housing to, uh, to jobs and, and infrastructure as we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioners who would like to speak at this time? Um, I'll just take a, a shot at a couple things here. Um, I, I felt like we heard, uh, and I appreciate people speaking, but I do feel like on, particularly in this, we heard, um, yeah, nodding up from the community. Um, and that's part of the reason I hugely think we need more time. Um, when, I understand that when the first community meeting occurred, which was pre-COVID, um, some 100 people, uh, turned out in Wyomama, uh, at that time, but that's, um, they've had very much difficulty, uh, even finding, um, you know, anything like that. I just dropped in on a lunch the other day that they had and it was mostly, um, the, uh, you know, mostly everybody on the lunch and it was only 12 or, I don't know, 15 people or less. It was mostly all developer interests, uh, that were on the lunch with very few, uh, people that could, um, make it or attend at that time. I feel like I heard practically from the, I don't know how many lawyers they have at Sterns Weaver, but we heard from a lot of them tonight. Um, and they represent Jeff Hills, uh, who's the, the, one of the biggest developers over there, um, and kind of have an outsized voice, I feel, in, um, this process. They also, just for, um, transparency, uh, and, and I know, um, Commissioner White referred to the wetlands, um, uh, density, uh, issue that I had brought up, looking, repealing that in the rural area, but the, the affordable housing, um, comp plan amendment that is here is for the entire rural area. It is a privately initiated matter. It is not something that, uh, the, the planning commission put forward or staff or anyone put forward because they thought it was something that we needed here. It was privately initiated by Sterns Weaver Miller filed it. They paid their fee. They put it forward. Um, if you go through it, it's a thick, thick book, but it's mostly filled with, uh, county documents. And in fact, that's where I first learned that the county had an affordable housing plan, uh, that was for five years. I've been here for four and a half and I've never known that. Um, but actually, if you look through that plan, it never cites this area as a place that they targeted even through 2021 to do that. Um, I think it would be a, a terrible mistake to do density credits in the rural area, uh, for the affordable housing plan as they presented. I also know we heard from a lot of Florida Home Partnership, uh, representatives here, people that are living in their homes, but I think Ms. LaCorre had said that there's, um, still many opportunities apparently, uh, for them, uh, to build, uh, in rural areas without, um, requiring this density, uh, credit. I think it would be very unwise to do that. Uh, the fact of the matter is that, um, you know, I have maintained all along that, um, affordable housing is inherently unaffordable, uh, when you do these densities in the rural areas. You cannot possibly afford the transit that is needed and every single person that lives in a affordable housing, uh, unit without transit, it's requiring for them to have a car, which they have to have. Um, it's $10,000 a year per car annually and that is just, uh, not to mention the, um, we're dealing with putting all these cars on the road with not doing, uh, talking about taking away the jobs, um, the job requirement so there's not trip capture. And let me tell you, I read through the DCA, uh, have writ, it's, it's actually not totally intact what I've gotten, but, uh, the opinion, uh, the settlement agreement that first, uh, created this whole issue back in 1990 and they were abundantly absolutely clear that what they wanted is rural areas. It's been clear, uh, through, throughout this that to do density, they made very special requirements, um, and you were supposed to hop through hoops to create a, a village. Um, and you know, this is, by and large, um, we start doing all of this. We're just creating again, um, all, just the, going back to the same, if we were to follow, um, without the care and without moving forward. And my concern is, uh, that we just, um, create more sprawling, um, unplanned suburbs with no infrastructure in place with densities, um, not just, um, you know, bad sprawl, but really, really bad sprawl because of how far out it is and how, and how much we've stretched. Uh, so I'm just going to express that now, um, with this and, you know, I think what we need to do is be looking, by the way, the downtown area of Wyomama is within the urban service area, which is already within the entire urban service area. We do have an affordable, uh, housing density bonus. We have plans. We have all kinds of things. So that can be in the downtown area. Uh, so, uh, I'll just, um, uh, state that I want to see opportunities for Wyomama to become, uh, a wonderful, um, place that was since 1990 has been the vision. Uh, and I hope that we don't, uh, get away from that in this, in this planning, but I'll totally support, um, of course, the extension because I think we need to do that and we see, we very much have to hear, uh, from the, uh, the residents living there and come up with a plan that will, um, serve people and, and, and be as, uh, fiscally sustainable as Commissioner Smith has said. I mean, I think we have just stretched things to the terrible edges of what we can, uh, possibly do, uh, any longer in any responsible way in both infrastructure and fiscal responsibility and feasibility. So, um, with that, I will, I finish my comments and I don't think there's any other commissioners. Um, so if we could move for, uh, or if, oh, you could do a roll call vote, please?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Overman?
Can unmute myself. Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
And Commissioner White, you're recognized again.
Thank you very much. I have a couple more questions about this wetland density credit issue. Um, it, it is not an acre for acre credit, correct?
Uh, that, that is correct. The way that the density calculations when there are wetlands on site are, is that if you have less than 25% of your property is wetlands, then you get to have full credit for the density on the property. If it is more than 25% of the property is in wetlands, then you take the upland acreage, you multiply it by 1.25 and that becomes the acreage by which you calculate your density on. That's how it works today.
Very good. And, and when are we planning to, uh, debate and vote on Commissioner Kemp's initiative on wetland, uh, density credits?
We, we have initiated a plan amendment, um, in the January cycle of plan amendments, um, that would implement what, uh, Commissioner Kemp's, um, motion was. That would come before you all at a workshop in March and then proceed through the public hearing process if, if the board was in agreement with what we've come up with.
So I, so I just want the ag community to, to hear that, 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 you know, the real issue is what's coming before us in March, you know, with, with respect to Commissioner Kemp's initiative. Um, frankly, it doesn't even matter whether or not this language is in the RP2 and WVR2 initiatives. So, you know, I just, you know, to be fair, right? I mean, I want all stakeholders to be aware of what's going on and be engaged. So, you know, I want those agricultural and landowner stakeholders to, to understand that, that the, the real issue is, is going to be in March and that's really where they want their voices heard. Um, I, I mean, I'm just going to express some concerns, um, about it, uh, tonight. Um, one is, you know, frankly, I'm, I'm afraid that we could end up, um, um, with some Burt Harris suits. Uh, you know, who knows whether or not, um, you know, the, 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 those that might bring them might be successful or what kind of footing we'd be on, but, you know, based upon some of the, the commentary that I've heard tonight, I'm, I'm frankly concerned about that. And in hearing that if your land, uh, contains more than 25% wetlands, then you're basically just looking at a 25% bump in your, in your, um, in your densities. Is that right, Mrs. Ornita?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so more than 25%, you get a 25% bump. You know, frankly, I don't know that the juice is worth the squeeze. Um, you know, you, you can see that, that this really, you know, has folks worked up. So, um, with that being said, I want my, my, um, frankly, my, 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 my friends, my folks in the ag community and, and, and those that are landowners to, to hear that the real issue is in March when we debate and vote on that broader policy that would just make that the law of the land in the rural area. Uh, but with that being said, um, I just think that having the language, um, in these RP2 and WVR2 documents right now is just an unnecessary distraction that, that can distract from the otherwise good work that we have the potential to do, um, on, on these, or in these planning areas. So I, I'm going to move to direct staff to just remove any sort of, um, language or reference to a removal of wetland density credits from both these RP2 and WVR2 documents.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. We have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by, uh, Commissioner Hagan, I believe. Um, and is there any, uh, discussion at this point?
I, I'd like to comment on the motion as well as the density credit issue.
Yes, go ahead. Um, Commissioner Overman?
Okay, in, in light of, of the motion, I'm, I don't necessarily think it should be permanently removed, but I do think we do need to address the density credit, um, I mean, the, the wetlands credit issue. Um, there is clearly a financial consequence. Um, you know, when, when you go out to, to mortgage your property or put a mortgage on your property, they don't necessarily just mortgage your house versus the land. They, they, they mortgage the entire property. And when, um, you borrow against a land, a piece of land, um, typically it's the entire property and it's not, it doesn't exclude the, the wetlands or, or the, but it does become a factor when it is considered. Um, when we're looking at the dense, at the wetland credit, um, it may have been the goal to address the issue of, um, wetlands inside the urban service area where density is already there, uh, and it just compounds the problem of the wetland being able to deal with the additional density as a consequence of, uh, lumping it all into one piece of the land. So I do think there's more work that needs to occur on the wetland credit that doesn't adversely affect our rural, um, economics associated with rural lands. with rural lands that don't separate and can continue to utilize those wetlands areas as a way of supporting the agricultural development and operations within agricultural properties. So I think it's important that we look at that factor and hear from our agricultural economics folks in developing a strategy as it addresses wetland use in rural areas. And consider maybe there may need to be a different standard when it's inside of an urban area where the densities are naturally much higher than they would be in an agricultural setting. So I'm going to support the motion at this stage. I don't know that it would mean it's permanently removed from the concept of certain areas within RP2 and WRV2. But I do think it's important for us to consider the economic impact of an area that has been historically rural, but has become somewhat suburbanized in certain sections of those land, of that land area as it has developed over time. And I'll stop there.
Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you. This is proving itself to be an enormously complicated issue. And, you know, we're clearly, I know I'm going to have an awful lot of questions for staff and a lot of, a lot of learning to do before this comes up in March. But I think to Commissioner White's point, when it comes up in March, it's going to be the whole enchilada. It's going to cover the entire rural area and it's going to treat everybody in the county that similarly situated the same. And I think for the purpose of bringing some closure to this process, there really isn't any reason for it to be in here. It's going to, and quite frankly, since it's going to come up in March, we're going to decide this before I think we even come back to this in any real way. So, you know, I'm going to support the motion also. But I think it's just very important to say that the issue is going to be front and center for us and we're going to deal with it holistically. And it's going to be a solution that's going to fit the entire rural service area, not just two small pieces of the county.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. This is a, this is a very interesting conversation. I get the point that if it is decided in March for the entire rural area, it is decided for these areas. And at that point, we, if this was still in there, we would take it out of here because, you know, it would be redundant in these community plan or in these RP2, WVR2 areas. On the other hand, I live in a community, Ruskin, that has a community plan that has eliminated the wetland density credit. The community of Ruskin has urban and rural areas. And throughout both the rural and urban areas of Ruskin, we eliminated the wetland density bonus 16 years ago. And it has not driven farmers into the ground and it has not ground development to a halt. It has protected our wetlands. And it has affected density in the ways that we wanted it to. The community of Keystone incorporated this, does not allow the wetland density bonus. That's incorporated in their community plan. They are a rural community that has made that decision to protect their wetlands and their community character in that way. And that, it's incorporated in the way they want to develop is to, is to not include wetland density bonuses. By the way, this is not something that is universal throughout Florida. I don't even, I don't even know if any other county does. I don't, I don't think they do what we do in some areas with this wetland density bonus. But my point is, if the larger rural area, the whole rural area, whole enchilada elimination of the wetland density bonus fails in March, I would still want it to be up to the communities of Baum, the community of Wyomama, to make the same decision, make the same choice or not, as we have in the community of Ruskin and the community of Keystone. So even if it's not throughout the rural area, I would like to leave this option open, whether it is or not, for these communities to decide for themselves, since we are supposed to be listening to the communities in this process. And so I won't support the motion, although I, you know, I think the points are well taken. But I think that there are other, other things besides an all or nothing, all the rural area or none. I think we might offer some communities, particularly these kind of no man's land, these RP2 areas, the option, if that's what their communities want. So I would hope to leave it in there.
Thank you. And Ms. Ornita, did you have your hand raised?
I did. I just wanted to make one clarification, that this item would be coming for a workshop with you all in March. The public hearing will not be until the end of April. So I just wanted to make that clear on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, I'll speak to this. I did, you know, bring this forward. I would like, just for a point of clarification, since it's gotten into this discussion and we could certainly, of course, we'll be having much further discussions with regards to this. But I will remind everyone that the WTL studied the economic analysis and that they did. And again, if you haven't gone through that, I'd urge you to do that. But we had it presented, at least in part, at the recent workshop at my request, when we kind of discovered very recent study. And one of the things they said, and I had already done this and thought about it for several years, and then unbeknownst to me, the study that some months before said that we should eliminate the wetlands density credit because it didn't make any sense, because we give away everything in this county. And that's why we can't really have transfer of development rights, because we already do things like density bonuses now, if we ever do this in the rural area, these kinds of wetland density credits. And the list goes on, the design exceptions, the low impact fees, everything we've done to make it so that there isn't even possible. We've given away the shop already and it's time for us to take a little bit of it back and exercise, I think, some smart growth, really targeting and looking at what we're doing and using tools and, you know, that can help us direct that. I will tell you that I did some surveying of other counties and other communities around Florida. And frankly, I couldn't find it, anything like this, like anywhere where they were having, at least in some of the growth areas and some of the other communities that I was even referred to. I don't, you know, it wasn't a full survey. And even if they had something, it wasn't, it was really done around transfer of development rights and it was not nearly as generous as this. So this, as well, the Tampa Bay Times has recently, and that will be coming up, but recently wrote a editorial in support of this. And there's, you know, we can have that longer discussion. But, you know, I think it's a tool that we need to, you know, stop using the way we've done it, is just, again, just giving away the shop. And that's exactly, unbeknownst to me, until I read it, what the WTL economic analysis study did when they looked at what we were doing. So I know it will be a longer conversation, but I also, you know, thinking with Commissioner Smith, and I was very aware that these, that the community plans in those communities eliminated this more than a decade ago. No lawsuits there, no, no questions about that. It doesn't exist. It's a gift we've given. And I've tried to find out what the origins of it are. We don't even have history for it, apparently, or not, none that has been discoverable anytime recently. But the, the point that she makes in terms of, you know, looking at the individual community plans and where they might want to incorporate them, like Keystone and like Ruskin did, in their community plan. So, and I agree that, just with all your points that you made in clarity, Commissioner White. But I'll go along, I think it could go either way, but I'm going to, I'm going to do a no vote, along with Commissioner Smith. And that's my reasoning behind it. And I had been thinking the same thing. So I kind of agree with, with her statements there. But your points are well taken. And I think you're right in terms of that. And it's become kind of an issue in this exactly. But, and I don't know if anyone else had any comments? Seeing none, well, let's take a roll call vote.
Kemp.
No.
Cohen.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
No.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Kemp and Smith voted no.
And with that, I think we are adjourned. Thank you. Oh, and go Bucks.